I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority. City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Mosher.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Mayor Protem Burns.
Here.
Mayor Van der Mark.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Calmick.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Today's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Casey.
Raise your fable. Hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Huntington Beach Police Chaplain James Pike.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we ask for your blessing upon this chamber, for those who will speak, for those who will govern, and those who will guide. We pray for our city during the U.S. Open of Surfing, for those who are competing, for those who are visiting. May you bless us with your protection. We pray for those hearts in our city yet wounded by summer violence or lives lost to the sea. We ask you to bless those who are grieving with the comfort you can provide. Finally, O Lord, in our times of division, may you make us good neighbors to each other no matter what happens as we live here in Huntington Beach, and we ask for all these blessings in your holy name. Amen.
Okay, moving on to closed session reports. City Attorney, do you have anything to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Announcement of supplemental communications. Do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we do. Mayor, for consent, calendar items 18 and email communication regarding positions on pending legislation before the state legislature. Item 19, three email communications received regarding car park reconfiguration constitutional plan. And consent item 29, a PowerPoint presentation entitled "Orange County Enhance Mobility for Seniors and Disabled Grant Program," received by our Director of Community Library Services, Ashley Waisaki. For Councilmember items number 30, 56 email communications received regarding a request to prepare an ordinance declaring Huntington Beach to be a parents' right-to-know city. For Councilmember item 31, 32 email communications regarding the Pacific Airshow settlement. And for Councilmember items 32, 11 email communications received regarding the proposed evaluation of city tax sharing. That's it.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have 55 signed up to speak, so...
Okay, we've only two minutes.
Okay, two minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the first group, and please approach both podiums if possible. David Reinerson, Patricia Pappas, Keith Jorgensen, Amory Hansen, Larry Sloanan, Suzanne Faria, Pat Goodman, Diane Bentley, Marissa Jackson, Luann Nichol Schup, Shammy Dingus.
At this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filling out a request-to-speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless a volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or actions on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the city attorney's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. First speaker, go ahead.
Shammy, you ready?
I'll try this. Hi, I'm Shammy. I'm going to talk about the airshow again. As a former president and CEO of a public NASDAQ company with thousands of shareholders, it's amazing to me that this council has entered into such a complex multimillion-dollar agreement without ever doing a proper financial analysis, including the forecasts of not just revenue, but lost revenue and expenses. Tony and Gracie keep waving around the economic impact report prepared by visit HB as though it were gold, and they keep saying $120 million over and over again. But that report projects not just benefits to HB, it's full of miscalculations and misleading statements. Three main things you should know about the phony economic numbers. Number one, they're for the region, not Huntington Beach. As an example, it cites 11,000 hotel nights. Eighty percent of those are outside of HB. HB doesn't get that hotel tax, Newport Beach, Coast Mesa, other cities do. Another example is that it doesn't specify any timeframe. It's very vague. Could you turn the page? It doesn't express any timeframe. One of the other amazing things that's in this financial report is property tax. Future increases in property tax are being attached to the airshow. And they could occur a decade in the future, but nonetheless, they're right there in the main numbers. And finally, the final phony $120 million is simply a macroeconomic money multiplier. It has no restrictions on area. It could refer to money that Pacific Airshow spends in Kansas, and it has no timeframe. So we're talking about $120 million of economic activity somewhere in the United States someday.
Thank you.
That's enough.
Next speaker.
This so-called airshow settlement is really a 40-year no-bid contract between the city and a specific vendor. From all appearances, taxpayers are giving away millions of dollars over a 40-year period. There is nothing in the document that provides any substantive proof of the costs incurred by the city or the vendor that support this settlement. The city was not responsible for the oil spill. Pacific Airshow is free to file a claim with the responsible party, the oil company, as many others have done, and were paid. So why didn't the Pacific Airshow do this? It's time for the city attorney to unwind this Pandora's Box of a settlement and bring about a transparent process to award a contract to a vendor to operate the airshow. An "I" vote on Agenda 31 is a step in the right direction to establish a way forward and some level of trust between taxpayers and city council. I have to say that I was surprised by Agenda 32, which requests an analysis of some long-ago and recent financial concessions with certain businesses in our city and the purchase of two apartment buildings dedicated to middle-income residents for affordable rents. I thought that such analysis would have been provided when developing a strategy to negotiate a settlement with Pacific Airshow, not so. So go ahead and vote "aye" on this item. And I'd say it includes some other events in the analysis, the U.S. Open and the Cherry Blossom Festival, that may be more comparable to the airshow. Finally, vote "no" on number 30, the so-called parents' right-to-know city. Really, this is creepy because it has nothing to do with city governance. It is false as it relates to a reference state bill.
Next speaker, go ahead.
David Reinerson, 26-year resident. Promises made, promises kept was their campaign slogan. The first one was no charter amendments. They are now on their fourth attempted charter amendment, so I'd call that a promise broken. They also promised greater civic involvement and then disbanded all the citizens' input commissions. And most of the time, during public comment, like Tony right now, here's staring at your phones instead of listening to the public comments. Another promise broken. But I think we should have been asking who the promises were made to. Because if you look at the most recent revelations of the Pacific Airshow settlement, it looks like the promises were made to Kevin Elliott. So let's see exactly what was promised to Kevin.
Kathy Ryder, resident since 1985. $5 million cash paid over seven years. $2 million cash if we get a settlement from Amplify Energy. $200,000 in invoices forgiven. $150,000 event fee refunded. 600 parking spaces free for 26 days. $234,000. 15 RV spaces free for 26 days. $30,000. 3,500 parking spaces for airshow at $158,000. And potentially, each of these is times 40 years. The city is responsible for a SEQUIS study, which could cost up to $500,000. The city will be responsible for any permits, such as the permits from the Coastal Commission or the Public Lands Trust. We don't even know what those costs are, and that's an annual expense. The city is responsible for hiring the police officers and the fire and the marine safety. The city must pay for all the beach maintenance. The city is going to pay for all the utilities the airshow uses. The city is going to pay for the trash cleanup. The city is going to pay and be responsible for the street closures. And the city will be responsible for any third-party resources if we have to call in police or fire or marine from another city, or if we need help from the state parks. Where is it going to stop?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Likely, likelihood is, it's not going to stop for 40 years, not the way the agreement's written. Pacific Airshow can assign and transfer this agreement at its sole's attrition to anyone. And the city really has no authority to do anything about it unless we come up with a five-vote majority, which obviously, no, will not happen while this council's in place. Can it be removed, modified, canceled, except by Unified Command? Quote-unquote Unified Command, which includes the Huntington Beach Police Department, the Fire Department, HB Marine Safety, FBI, FAA, U.S. Coast Guard, and the city attorney, Michael Gates, and the Pacific Airshow. Guess that means that the city now has a new department called Unified Command to oversee this whole operation.
Thank you.
Excellent, continue. What is the damage to us, everybody here from Huntington Beach? We lost $5 million in cash. We'll lose $2 million to Amplify Energy settlement, if we get one. Where is that, Mr. Gates? $20,000 in invoices forgiven. $6 million in permits. Parking fees, which is $234,000 plus $158,000 plus $30,000 plus $42,000 over 40 years, millions of dollars. SEQUIS study, $550,000 every 10 years, so $550,000 over four years, $2.2 million. We have city permits and services for a grand total of $32.2 million and permits and services for an airshow. Don't know about you, but it looks like pure corruption to us.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Diane Bentley, and I'm a longtime local resident. The recent release of settlement terms from the Pacific Airshow debacle clearly shows that the city council majority and the city attorney conspired to both conceal information on the agreement and to stonewall the release of terms that seriously damaged our city and shamelessly favor their partisan political pal, Ken Elliott, Kevin Elliott, and his Code Four enterprise. There is no explanation for these outrageous and scandalous actions other than the culprits apparently never expected to get caught. This grotesquely biased settlement is bound to be set aside through legal action. However, the fact remains that a deliberate effort to obstruct the right of our residents and taxpayers to learn what the city is on the hook for is indefensible on so many levels, and we deserve protection from it happening again. Therefore, with a nod to tonight's agenda, item 25, 541, I would like to propose a new city ordinance declaring Huntington Beach to be a citizen's right-to-know city. It will state that the city will not restrict immediate public release of any settlement terms on lawsuits without unanimous consent of the city council. We need this new ordinance immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Suzie Foray. I'm an HB resident, public school teacher for 34 years, and a mom of four, ages 18 to 33. I'm here to speak for my first time to support the mayor's proposed ordinance and to say thank you. As an educator, my experience has been that my students thrive most when I work in partnership with their parents. The thought of keeping important information about their child from them is incomprehensible. I've always had an open-door policy with my families, and I'm not about to slam the door in their faces now. Please vote "yes." Thank you.
Thank you. Amory?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hansen. I'm speaking tonight in support of I am 32, Councilman McKeon's item to have a study session on revenue sharing. Huntington Beach should receive the revenue it has fairly received, and that revenue should be used for ways of improving Huntington Beach. The city council should look into where the revenue is going, and if there are ways we can increase the amount of that revenue going toward making Huntington Beach continue to be a great city. Once again, I urge a "yes" vote on I am 32. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council, I urge a "yes" vote on 30, on the parents' right in Huntington. But I'm here to talk about a few different things. I'm looking back over the year to see what the mayor and our council majority have brought forward in this past year, and I'm looking first, I'm looking at three things. I'm looking at a resolution to support Israel. Whereas on October 7th, 2023, during the seven-day festival of Sukkot, Hamas terrorists launched a coordinated, unprovoked, surprise attack on Israel. Did you see the footage of what the terrorists did to the teenagers? They even put babies in ovens and burned them to death. Our city council publicly declared support for Israel and condemned the horrifying attack. Mosher, Bolton, and Calmick did not even sign the resolution. Mayor Protem Burns, though put forward a resolution to reaffirm our commitment and dedication to our Constitution and the First and Second Amendment rights, Mosher, Bolton, and Calmick walked out before the vote. Very wrong. A few weeks, hang on. A few weeks ago, my friend and I were walking and talking, and we were speaking with an elder in our community, and due to surgery, he was temporarily in a wheelchair. And as we talked to him, he told us that his wife died, just had died. And I've been telling this story about this gentleman and letting residents know that Councilmember Mosher stated recently that there needed to be a conversation about these people that have a one person living in their home.
Thank you.
So we need to do something about that.
Next speaker.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Keith Jorgensen, and I am running for the Ocean View School District Board. I stand before you today vehemently opposed to California Assembly Bill 1955, which now is law. Threatens parental rights to be informed about critical health and gender decisions affecting their children. AB 1955 seeks to allow schools and teachers to provide sensitive medical care to minors without notifying their parents. This is not just a legal issue.
Please don't interrupt the speakers. Thank you.
This is not, this is not just a legal issue, it's a fundamental attack on the role of parents in the lives of their children. Parents have a primary and sacred responsibility to care for and guide their children, especially in matters as sensitive as healthcare. AB 1955 undermines this responsibility by excluding parents from decisions that could profoundly impact their children's physical, emotional, and mental well-being. Furthermore, 1955 disregards the diversity of beliefs and values held by families across California and imposes a blanket policy that fails to respect the cultural, religious, and personal convictions of parents who have every right to be involved in their children's healthcare decisions. In conclusion, I support Gracie and the other city council members that want to make Huntington Beach a parents' right-to-know city. AB 1955 sets a dangerous precedent by eroding parental rights and weakening the family unit. We must stand against this bill to protect parental authority, foster trust between parents and teachers, and uphold the fundamental values that underpin our society. As I stated previously, I am running for school board along with David Clifford, and once elected, we will fight this at the board level as well.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Luann Nichol Schup. I am a longtime resident of Huntington Beach. In December, my stepdaughter moved back to Buena Park from Havazu, Arizona, so she could be closer to family. She is working two jobs to make this happen. She is renting from her mom and stepfather. Unknown to her, she was on the OCPA program. Last month, when it got real hot, she turned up her air. She received a $586 electric bill. I said, "Honey, you might want to check to see if you are on the OCPA program." Sure enough, she was. That means she paid an extra $108. Let's review this. During the previous city council regime, Dan Calmick and Natalie Moser looped all of the citizens of Huntington Beach in the OCPA program in a closed meeting right after they were elected without letting us vote on it. SCE provides 100% renewable electricity to its customers. However, OCPA acts as a middleman by charging its customers approximately 18% more than SCE. Now, why would you do that? Dan Calmick, Natalie Moser, why would you do that? Besides Dan Calmick getting assigned to the OCPA board and getting a stipend of $250 for every meeting, what was your motive for everyone in Huntington Beach to pay 18% more on their electric bill? Especially now with a recession coming on like gangbusters and Bidenomics. So tonight, I want to thank Pat, Gracie, Tony, Michael Gates, and especially Casey McKeon for getting the citizens of Huntington Beach out of the OCPA scam. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Marissa Jackson. I'm running for city council, and I wanted to voice my support for the mayor's proposal to make our city a parents' right-to-know city. This is not about being partial. This is about protecting our children. And once the state intervenes and thinks they know how to raise our children better than us parents do, that's when the mama bears come out. So I'm here to speak up for our children, for our parents, and for our families. My friend, who is a teacher in Anaheim, she's a kindergarten teacher. She was walking down the hallway with her class, and another teacher with her class walked down the hallway to the bathroom, and that teacher bent over and said, "Are you a girl or a boy?" Do you want our children? Little kindergartners being asked that question? Are we trying to confuse our children? The schools are trying to confuse our children. If we aren't paying attention, parents, you need to get involved. Request records and curriculum for your schools so you know what is being taught. This is your constitutional right as parents, and it is your God-given right. Dan, I have a question. You said it's the parents who should decide what books their children should read. Shouldn't it be the parents who decide if they don't want their children taught sexualization curriculum to their children? It is our responsibility as law-abiding citizens, parents, civic leaders, to all protect our children. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, everybody, let's go. Ann Palmer, Cheryl Browning, can you hear me? Lazlo Lack, Stephanie Camacho Van Dyke, Marty Etheridge, Eric, Jessie, Gia D., TJ England, Erin Oaks, please come down.
Go ahead.
I'm Marty Etheridge. I, obviously by the white head, you can tell I don't have any children currently in elementary school or high school, but I am a grandparent and a great-grandparent. And I know if one of the children fell in the playground, we would want to know about it. If they were bleeding, if they needed hospitalization, if they needed help or counseling, we would want to know about it because we want a team with the teachers. So I'm praying that you will continue to fight the fight to keep us informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, members of Huntington Beach City Council. My name is Stephanie Camacho Van Dyke, and I'm the Senior Director of Advocacy and Education at LGBTQ Center OC. I'm here today to address tonight's agenda item 30 that seeks to declare Huntington Beach as a parents' right-to-know city in response to AB 1955 or the Safety Act. If you read carefully, the Safety Act provides much-needed support and resources for parents and families to help them navigate the complexities of understanding and accepting their child's gender identity or sexual orientation. It does not keep parents in the dark about their child. Instead, it empowers parents and families to work together towards acceptance and care, ultimately fostering a more inclusive and supportive environment for their LGBTQ children. If anything, the Safety Act prevents politicians and local governments from inappropriately intervening in family matters and asserting control. It is absolutely baffling to learn that the city council believes that they have some sort of stake in challenging the Safety Act in the first place. We need to do better. Let's support our queer kids, respect queer kids, and support their right to safety, privacy, and well-being while at school and in their communities. This is a complete distraction for the bigger issues at play with the city, so please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker, go ahead. We'd like to move on with the meeting. We'd like to move on with the meeting. Thank you. Go ahead, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Eric. I'm here to speak out against the ordinance declaring Huntington Beach to be a parent's right-to-know city. And I was a teacher for seven years here. We know that teachers are more than just teachers, right? We're nurses, right? Mediators, psychologists, all on a very well-compensated salary, right? We can all laugh. It's bipartisan. We take a bullet for your kid, and some of us have taken actual bullets for your kids, and I know some of them. But we're not narcs. We're not going to tattle on your own children. My political party is mind your business. If you are such... If you are such a failure of a parent that you need to rely on a credentialed adult to tattle on your children, consider becoming a better parent.
Hey, please, please hold on a second. We're not doing this. We are not doing this. We're adults, and if you cannot behave like an adult, please go. We have speakers. We're going to give them the respect that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Do you even trust kid... Do you even trust teachers to narc on your kids? I thought we were too busy indoctrinating them with CRT, DEI, YMCA. So what is it? Teachers can't be trusted because they'll teach spooky acronyms? Or teachers can be trusted because you're afraid to parent your child?
Please finish. Go ahead and finish.
I'm almost done. You guys are so obsessed with children's sexualities. It's weird and embarrassing. Stop wasting taxpayers' time and money with this crap. Thank you.
Okay, just a second, Cheryl. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Go ahead, next speaker?
I'm speaking tonight in strong agreement with a city declaration for the sanctity of parental rights for their children's well-being morally, mentally, spiritually, and physically.
I'm sorry, Speaker, can you pause for a second? I have a point of order. We called a five-minute recess, and some folks took that as five minutes, so they probably left the room or left the meeting at home. I don't think we can call the meeting back when you call five minutes.
Okay, we'll wait another... We'll wait another two minutes. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Kalmick, next time you call Governor Nusantin and his sidekick robber Banta, and we know you call them, please tell them to prosecute crime. Tell them to put the homeless and the criminals and illegals in the
Go ahead, next speaker.
Hi, T.J. England. First of all, I'd like to thank Dan Kalmick and Natalie Mosher and Rhonda Bolton for the work they're doing for this city under very difficult circumstances. I find this item 30 on the agenda ridiculous. We already have a state law this will, if you pass this, you're going to have another lawsuit on our hands or more of Huntington Beach money will be going out. Am I, is that not right? I think any parent should be able to recognize eventually that their child is gay. I, I, I don't understand why we have to go through this. It just doesn't make sense to me. I also am very much in favor of item 31. I want some explanation of this secret agreement contract that our learned attorney seems to have created with Code Four. I, I find it unbelievable. The amount of money people have mentioned that's going to cost our city is absurd. They, Code Four didn't get a coastal permit for any of this. Have they done for this coming year? I'm curious. No? The money that they are handing out is bleeding our coffers dry. We need to get this taken care of. I cannot imagine that an attorney agreed to these giveaway terms. It doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Erin Haislett Oaks. I'm a homeowner on the 500 block of 16th Street in downtown Huntington Beach. My husband and I live a few doors down from the apartment building where two people were murdered and another three were non-fatally stabbed on July 4th. I'm here tonight as a follow-up to the August 1st email that I sent to all seven of you who are members of our city council. Special thanks to the four of you who replied to my email, acknowledged my safety concern, and are eager to improve safety in downtown HB on the 4th of July. The chaos on the 4th of July has gotten worse over the past few years and it's now completely out of control in my downtown neighborhood. It's unsafe and now deadly. As you know, your job as mayor and city council members is to establish goals and policies, enact legislation, adopting the city's operating budget, and appropriate the funds that are necessary to provide service to the city's residents. So I'm here to respectfully urge you to work together as our elected representatives, meet with the police chief, and devise a plan to appropriate the urgently needed additional funds for next year's 4th of July. Additional resources will allow the HBPD to bring in extra police to patrol downtown neighborhoods and enforce law and order on the 4th of July. Given the number of people pouring into downtown HB neighborhoods last month on the 4th, there were not enough police. As a result, the streets were unsafe and illegal fireworks were being shot into the air, including military-style M-80s. Some of the illegal fireworks that were still lit landed on rooftops, including mine. They also hit cars driving by and they likely caused injuries to people. Just hours before the murders took place on the 4th of July, a neighbor of mine called the firework hotline to report illegal fireworks being shot into the air in the chaos on the corner of 16th and Pecan Avenue. Unfortunately, the police were too overwhelmed.
Next speaker?
Hello, mayor and city council and attendees. First of all, I want to say happy summer in Surf City, a beautiful place. This is August. Next. Congratulations on a very, very successful, ongoing U.S. Open of Surfing. And next, I'd like to address something a little more serious. I too am a parent, a grandparent, a volunteer, a friend, a colleague, and I've been touched by this issue. I think it's very, very important that we do have a resolution so that we will know that we have parental rights. It is simply too much for a child to carry duplicate personas. Psychological and physical decisions of this magnitude must be inclusive of parents, counselors, and educators. The "don't out the kids" mantra should be "don't hurt the kids." Why is it that countries that were at the forefront of exploring, medicalizing, and surgically altering humans for gender theories have dramatically backed away from it? Clinics have closed and new approaches are underway. Is it because the trend is faltering? Or because the data is not affirming the glorious panacea that was promised for a select group of which only a very small percent truly experienced clinical dysphoria? And whether the minor or adult transitioner falls out of the process, transitions successfully, desists or detransitions, the health of that person is markedly better if there is support from family and counselors. Can all parents exhibit the correct amount of support and guidance? Hopefully so. Might they not be affirming enough? Possibly. Or perhaps they are too affirming and celebratory. The vast majority of parents will love their children unconditionally. So how can society condone the severing of the most fundamental connection that humans experience?
And uniquely- Next speaker? Go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name is Loz Loak. I'm a longtime resident in Huntington Beach and I would like to, at this point, voice my support for Mayor Vandermark's initiative 244-541, to make this a "Parents' Right to No City." Anytime in the past, anytime a government is going to get in the way of parents, that's never worked. That will never work. There can never be a time when parents are going to be subject to what the government is going to outline. We're not going to sit back and let the government tell us what's going to happen to our children, or how they're going to raise them, or what they're going to teach them. We're paying teachers to teach our children. The superintendent of schools, as on record, is saying that we are bound by a high oath to provide the best education possible to our children. The Secretary of Education in California, right now California is 29th. I don't consider that doing the best job that they can do. I would like to see them put all this energy into teaching our kids and doing the job that we told them to do and to pay them. That's the job, what we said. Not teach them or tell them how they're going to be raising our kids and when they can't tell us what they're doing in school. A parent has a right to know that. How can they say that we're not going to tell them about this or that? Gender-changing things and all kinds of different puberty blockers? They don't need a parental guidance for that. But if they have a headache and they want a Tylenol, they got to get a note from mommy for it. That's not right. And they need to make that right. So my point is, there should be a separation. The state has no business telling the parents how they're going to raise their children. They don't have a right. Gavin Newsom is not who I want raising my kid. I'm doing a job by myself and I don't need the teacher to tell me how to raise them. This is just completely lunacy. And Albert Einstein said it best. There's only one difference between genius and stupidity. There are levels to genius. There are limits to genius. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Every school district needs to do what Chino Valley Unified School District has done. They have, they have filed a lawsuit against Newsom, against Bill 1955, which Newsom signed into law and will take effect in January of next year. It violates the constitutional rights of parents to do process and freedom of religion. It seeks a court judgment declaring that the new law is in violation of parents' rights under the 14th and 1st Amendment, an order that would temporarily stop the state government from enforcing the law. Parents have the rights and responsibility towards their children. Family law courts recognize these rights. In California, parents have the right to provide for care, custody, companionship, and management of their children. You have the right to make educational and medical decisions for your children and have regular contact with them, even if they don't live with you. So what's going on? Why is Gavin Newsom trying to take away these rights? No.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, I'm Gia Di. Parents have always had the responsibility of raising their children. Historically, they've been the champions for their kids. They're the stewards of their children's welfare, which isn't limited to financial responsibility, medical responsibility, physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual development of their child. Recently, parents who speak up for their children against policies that go against their values are labeled domestic terrorists. How radical our society has become when parents are handcuffed and jailed for speaking up for their children. The Marxist school unions seem to overreach and are starting to believe the students are wards of the state. Does that mean that they will take all the costs of raising a child? That would be over $23,000 a year, including housing. Let parents be the parents. Let the schools educate. There are 5,837,690 students enrolled in the public school in the year 23 to 24. That's a lot of young minds the schools will influence. Who would be the best to take care of a child? An institution that oversees 5.8 million children? Or a parent who loves the one, two, three, four, or five of their children? Sacramento continues to overreach and override parental rights, terrorizing the parents and indoctrinating the students. I support item 30 and hope that Huntington Beach and Chino Valley can be a safe haven or a sanctuary city for parents and for families. Let's protect family values. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speakers?
All right. The next group, come on down. Bethany Webb, Zignesh Padair, Tim Geddes, Kathy Carrick, Patty Kabata. Looks like she's okay. Marie Palmer, David Clifford, Barbara Shapiro, Jean Gooden, Joss Shapiro.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council members and everyone in attendance. My name is Zignesh Padair, lifelong resident of Huntington Beach. Recently, I got married and you know what comes with that is the next step of kind of creating your own family. And my wife and I began speaking and we're thinking of like, what is the purpose of creating life if that child is just going to become a ward of the state? I mean, there is no intention to even prolonging life if we're just going to be handing them off to the government. You laugh about it, but your ideology doesn't even produce children. You want to indoctrinate our own. And, and the problem, the problem is, it's coming from the state. You're going to say what our mayor is trying to do is just a stunt and it has no real teeth to it. I don't know if you realize, but back in, I think, April, Measure 8 passed. We want voter IDs. What does Sacramento do? Ted Wood goes and immediately passes legislation to override our votes in this city. We voted for that. So what our mayor, what our mayor is doing is protecting our children regardless of what the superpowers of Sacramento wants to happen. It is not their responsibility to dictate what we should be thinking, what is right and wrong. And the problem starts with Title I funding. It's basically converted schools to basically glorified health centers. They're turning these children into mental insasylums. They're causing them issues. They're kids. They don't know any better between left and right and up and down. And you're telling them that their genitalia is wrong and they're born in the wrong body. How evil of a thought that must be in your head. And, you know, just to put more hypocrisy on the story, you're over here talking about transparency with the airshow. Why don't you give transparency to the teachers and the parents? I mean, where is the hypocrisy? Seriously? At the end of the day, it's not, it's not too bad. One last thing, there is a Supreme Court case coming in right now with Torsefor Mars, Mayfield City Court. It's going to be in the distributed to conference with the Supreme Court September 30th. The fight for parental rights isn't over. It's just beginning.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Now, we know something serious is brewing here in Huntington Beach when Gracie bustles in her Calvary Chapel cohorts here to flood the chamber and tell us we're not doing a good job of raising our kids. Frankly, I'm kind of sick of that. And it's weird. Agenda item 30 is a fake controversy. Just like every time these guys get into trouble, which is pretty often lately, they come up with one of these resolutions. What I'm proposing is that we have a resolution to have a new governmental body that deals with roads, buildings, safety issues. We're going to call this new governmental agency the City Council. Because what we have here is Gracie, Casey, Strickland, and Burns is a cross between a morality police and a church revival meeting. But I do want to show you what they're hiding here. Because every time they come up with one of these proposals, like item Agenda 30, Gracie's hiding something and Strickland engages. So what are they hiding? Well, let's see here. It's the air show! And they're flying away with your money. So just know, the money goes from the airshow to Kevin Elliott that goes back to fund their campaigns. And that's why they have such big signs. And they're pushing their three stooge candidates for city council. And those dudes are really weird, let me tell you. And imagine how much they can steal if they had a seven-member majority.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Tim Geddes here. Christmas came early last year for Kevin Elliott and Code Four, producers of the Pacific Air Show. The city council majority of Tony Strickland, Gracie Vandermark, Pat Burns, and Casey McKeon, fronted by city attorney Michael Gates, doled out mass quantities of holiday treats in settlement of a lawsuit that could have been fought and won. Trouble was, they didn't consult the owners of the treats, namely, the Huntington Beach taxpayers or their council guardians, Dan Kalmick, Natalie Mosher, and Rhonda Bolton. By covering up their settlement details, they thought, they thought that, like the Grinch, they could steal Christmas from Surf City's Whoville population. Fortunately, our own Cindy Lou Who, Gina Clayton Tarvin, blew the whistle off this dastardly stunt and with the airshow settlement details exposed, old Saint Mick and his mega-majority minions got caught with their hands in the cookie jar. Looks pretty empty to me. The city should be prepared to have this settlement set aside and there should be a full investigation of this civic ripoff. Obviously, those responsible should be held to account. Not only should old Saint Mick and the council majority minions be called on the carpet, but their endorsed elves as well. Can we trust Chad Williams, Butch Twining, and Don Kennedy, who've been willing to pull their sleigh to not to rip us off further or guard the cookie jar? I doubt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Patricia Kabata. And I wanted to say thank you for wanting to make Huntington Beach a safe haven for families and for children. It is unfortunate that we have such a corrupt communist governor that he's willing to go to the lengths of removing parental rights. Most people are not aware of the curriculum that is going on in their own, in the schools where their children go to. By you bringing this ordinance, it is going to force more parents to look into the education that is being presented to their children on a daily basis. And that's something that nobody likes to talk about. A lot of people have been coming up here, calling a lot of us weird and what we, what we are advocating for. I don't think that speaking out against pedophiles is weird. I don't think that not wanting books in schools that show children how to give blowjobs, how to have anal sex, I don't think that's weird because these are books that are in the library in different unified school districts here in the state of California. None of that is weird. So when I'm listening to people calling us weird for speaking out against pornography in school, then I must look at these people like they are supporting pedophiles, which is extremely concerning. What you are doing is taking the steps that more mayors, more cities need to do. There's a lot of people that are afraid to speak up and by you at least putting this here, you will inspire others to do the same. And they will not fear the backlash that many, many people fear, the backlash that they're going to receive when they want to make actual change within their own cities. So thank you very much for what you're doing because you're protecting families and children. And thank you for not allowing all of these pedophiles and their disgusting ideologies to knock on our door. Thank you.
Next speaker? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Carrick. It is said, "Nobody on earth can ever love you more than your parents." At times, it seems that our public education system doesn't understand this basic truth. If they did, they wouldn't be supporting AB 1955 that basically assigns educators to purposefully withhold valuable information from parents regarding their children. It doesn't matter what their personal beliefs are on specific issues. It is never acceptable for educators to try to insert their own ideology and intentionally interfere with the sacred bond between parent and child. It is not up to educators to be the arbiters of issues regarding social, emotional development, health, and well-being, et cetera, of our children. Their job is to report issues and/or incidents to the parents to allow them to make the decisions necessary for them to parent. Educators need to stop overstepping their boundaries. I strongly support and applaud Mayor Vandermark's call for an ordinance to declare Huntington Beach a "Parents' Right to No City." I and many others believe our children are our most precious resource. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we could work together for the benefit of our children? Imagine how great it would be if educators focused on teaching academics and getting test scores up and parents focused on using all the tools available, including important information shared collaboratively from teachers and schools to guide their children down the very best and productive path for each one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello. I support Mayor Vandermark's agenda item to declare Huntington Beach a "Parents' Right to No City." Shh, don't tell the parents is what they're saying. And whether you know it or not, you're following socialist teacher Saul Alinsky's ideas, increasing insecurity, anxiety, and uncertainty. Destroy the family, he says. You are not protecting the children and parents that way. When these children are taken from their parents, it's traumatic for the teen, especially because a parent wants to protect and advise. If you cared, you would change this garbage in your schools. Because of this, our kids have become insecure, anxious, and uncertain. Just like that photo of Yaeli Martinez from an LA school district. She was encouraged to be who she wanted to be by a counselor of the school. When her mom tried to help her to continue being a girl as she was born, the government took her away from her mom. She started to become depressed. Did the state or school try to help? No. But her mom tried, but they took precious Yaeli away from her. She died. Yes, she committed suicide. And if Huntington Beach allows this to go on in their schools, shh, it's a secret. Don't tell your parents. Then I say you're abiding by the socialist agenda by destroying the family, brainwashing, coaching, and threatening to take the kids away from the parents who want to protect their children. We pay you to teach them properly, not to indoctrinate them. And because, because taking them away, taking them away from us is not good. If you're going to continue to allow this to happen in our schools so others could end up like Ayalela Martinez, we have something to say. We're going against the 14th Amendment. You are going against the 14th Amendment. If you don't protect the rights of the parents and stop indoctrinating the children, then the next suicide that occurs in one of our schools because of indoctrination, these parents and I will know that there is blood to account.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and city council. My name is David Clifford and I'm a longtime resident of Huntington Beach. I care about our city. I care about the people that live here and I especially care for our children. Those are some of the reasons why I'm running for Ocean View School District Board of Trustees in the November election. I'm running together with Keith Jorgensen to bring common sense to the board. Again, that's David Clifford and Keith Jorgensen for Ocean View School Board. My comments tonight are geared towards Agenda Item 30 for Mayor Vandermark regarding Assembly Bill 1955. I want to thank the mayor for bringing this issue to light. AB 1955 was a sneaky gut and amend bill passed by the California Legislature and signed into law by Governor Newsom. Because it was knowingly unpopular, the author hijacked another bill and replaced its text, which allowed the bill to skirt the usual legislative process that permits debate and a public hearing. What does this bill do? It severs the line of communication between school staff and parents. It creates mistrust. It destroys the collaborative spirit necessary for a healthy working relationship between teachers and parents. Under this new law, confused children can now be led to the conclusion they were born in the wrong body, be given learning material reinforcing that idea, and coached down the path of gender transitioning, all without parental knowledge. It's mind-boggling how anyone supports this bill. Regardless of your beliefs on gender transitioning, why would anyone want legislation that permits schools to keep secrets from parents? It's a dangerous slippery slope. I found over a dozen OVSD board bylaws that are contradicted by this new law, thus eliminating local control of this issue. AB 1955 is yet another example of government overreach and will not be tolerated in Huntington Beach. That is why I support this agenda item. Please vote for the Ocean View too. David Clifford and Keith Jorgensen for the Ocean View School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Bethany Webb, 45-plus-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'd like to start off saying that Griselda, our mayor, couldn't hold custody of her children. In California, that's the truth. There's paperwork. You can find it and you know, hey, hey, I'm sorry, would they, okay. Tell her to say it's not true.
Okay, that's enough.
Okay, what's happening?
It's not true. Go ahead.
Okay, well, there's paperwork. Okay, go ahead. So, here's the thing. As the mother of a transgender child, okay, my husband is here, who's a biker, Harley rider, we wrote-
Okay, stop interrupting. You don't, just a second, just a second. You don't have to like what the speakers have to say. That is their first amendment right to come up here and say whatever's on their mind. We would like to get through this meeting as smoothly as possible. I know this is an emotionally charged issue. Please try to control yourselves. Please go ahead.
Can you put time back on that? Okay, so, to go back, oh, the coward Mr. Burns is finally looking at me because he seems to think that the Second Amendment and parents not being told that their children are identifying something is the biggest threat to our children. What we know, facts say, again, is guns are the biggest threat to our children. So the two of you, that's the truth. It's not books and it's not, and by the way, teachers do not tell parents multiple things that their children are doing socially. The law does not say that you cannot tell them. It is saying you don't have to tell them. When my child came out, because I had a relationship with my child, she felt comfortable in saying, "This is who I am," and we worked through it. And that's what real parents do. When somebody just talked about suicide, you want to know when kids speak suicide is when they go home and their parents are judgmental, unaccepting people like this that were- when they go home and their parents are judgmental, unaccepting people like this that will throw them out of their house and create...
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up.
Next speaker?
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Gooden, a retired teacher, a mother of three, and grandmother for nine grandchildren. My purpose here tonight is to speak against...
Just a second, Jeannie, just a second. I cannot hear the speaker.
Because your minions are harassing you.
Stop yelling out. Thank you. Excuse me. Stop.
Do I begin again or not?
Go ahead, please start.
My purpose here tonight is to speak against Governor Newsom's illegal and unconstitutional AB 1955 that he signed, and speak on behalf of Mary Gracie's request to repair an ordinance declaring Huntington Beach a parent's right to no city. He has, he has again overstepped his authority, and with his illegal signature of this AB 1955, this illegal law clearly defies our, we parents constitutional and God-given rights to raise our children. Federal law guarantees parents' rights to access their children's school records. Newsom is advising districts to lie to parents. I repeat this, lie to parents that we parents should, our children have gender identity issues or any other concerns, are not allowed access to their records. We parents will not idly sit by and allow him to abrogate our parental rights. Public schools are meant to support, not subvert, parents in their desire to educate their children. So I, a mother of three and grandmother for nine amazing grandchildren, eagerly support Mayor Gracie's request to repair an ordinance declaring Huntington Beach a parent's rights to no city. God gave me a new moniker for you, Pat Gracie Tony. Henceforth, you shall be known as the Fabulous Four. This new, this new name God gave me exemplifies the many brave and courageous positions you four have taken to bring the winds of change to our served city. I want to thank you again, you Fabulous Four, for the many, actually more than 120 negative family issues that you've eliminated in our city. It's understandable why our city has now been recognized by national and international concerns and are calling you, Mary Gracie, for aid in how you Fabulous Four can help them and bring these positive issues to their...
Next ten.
Last call for Joe Shapiro. The next group, Perry Clithero, Frank Rodriguez, Joyce Riley O'Reilly, Oscar, Harry McLaughlin, Ken Inoue, Debra Felice, Jayden, Catherine Goddard. Oh, one more. Brian Vea.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Jayden. I attend a charter school, and I'm here to tell you why AB 1955 is a disaster waiting to happen. I also want to call out Natalie Moser, Rhonda Bolton, and Dan Kelmig for supporting this mess. And to go back, Gracie Vandermark, thank you for having the guts to fight it. Let's be real, AB 1955 is supposed to make everyone feel included, but all it really does is put us kids at risk. This bill was to shove inappropriate and harmful content into our libraries. Libraries are where we go to learn and relax, not to deal with explicit adult content. Are you kidding me? Natalie, Rhonda, and Dan, what on earth are you thinking? Supporting this ordinance shows you don't, sorry, not showing, not supporting this ordinance shows that you don't give a damn about us kids. We don't need to see this stuff when we're just trying to pick out a book for school. You're supposed to protect us, not shove inappropriate content down our throats. Get it together. I'm 100% behind Gracie Vandermark and her agenda to fight AB 1955. Finally, someone who actually listens to us and understands that libraries should be safe spaces for kids. Gracie gets it. She knows we need protection, not more exposure to harmful materials. She's fighting for us, and I'm glad people woke up and voted for these four. Honestly, I also support these Republicans on the City Council who are standing against 1955. At least they understand that our libraries need to be clean and safe. They're actually doing their job instead of playing political games. AB 1955 is pure trash for kids like me. It's time to stop messing around with our safety and start making real decisions that help people. If you can't do that, Governor Newsom, step aside and let someone else who can actually take over. We're done with this nonsense. Thank you for listening.
Next speaker? Go ahead.
Good evening, Council, and good evening to Huntington Beach's LGBTQ community. I want you to know that you are welcomed and you are loved. Mayor, I request that you withdraw your item for tonight. The mandatory outing of LGBTQ kids is both cruel and will harm children. Regarding legitimate city business, I am excited to see that fiscal responsibility is on the agenda tonight, and I support the spirit of both Agenda Items 31 and 32. I predict that what we're going to find as we look through this is that a lot of these deals are very complicated and have to be negotiated with the staff and with City Council, often through many, many meetings, because our zoning laws and our regulations and our city's ordinances and our planning process are very complicated and simply far too burdensome. Because of that, the city knows that we need certain businesses, we need certain developments, so we do these negotiations, we make these exceptions, we find these carve-outs, we make our little changes to the ordinances, and then we come, we include tax cuts and subsidies sometimes too, and we pass these deals in order to get stuff done. But the, I imagine a lot of people are going to find fault with aspects of these deals when we look into them, not necessarily because staff was corrupt or because council was corrupt, but because the arbitrary nature of these decisions will always lead to disagreement about what is best or what is right. To make matters worse, these regulations are a disservice to our community anyway. The verdict of economists is clear. These regulations are the primary cause of the great housing shortage, and it strangles economic growth by denying business, the workers and consumers they need to thrive and to prosper. So I urge you to loosen zoning regulations and to streamline the planning process and to take the arbitrary decision-making out of it. That's the most important thing that you guys should be focused on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Good evening. Let's be clear. AB 1955, also known as the TRAP bill, takes rights away from parents actively as it's being implemented against the Constitution. These parents have the right to dictate all aspects of their child's education and life. Let's also be clear, the far-left and the LGBT community has failed. They have failed. We have our youth dying in an uproar of suicide, and they want to think that they have the right to dictate how these child's lives will go? You have failed the entire time you've had the torch. We have been listening to the Democrats and the LGBT community for decades. Now it is the parents' job to come in and save their own children. It is the parents' job to come in and dictate their lives. Chino Valley, Temecula Valley, Orange Unified, and the state of Florida all implemented policies to notify parents of what happens with their child under the delegated duty of a school district. How many transgender youth have killed themselves due to the notification of parents? None. But let's, let's be clear, under the care of the Democrats and the LGBT community, it has been skyrocketing because of the dictation that they do in these meetings, going to our legislation and acting as if they know what they need. These are their parents' kids, not yours. I commend what you're doing. It is amazing work. A checks and balances between a school district and a city should happen, and building that bridge and changing the world with this type of legislation is amazing. It's innovative. Great work. Oh, one more thing, just because I feel like we need it. Christ is king.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Brian Vea. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This, I wish I had all these fiscal conservatives here when the city, some of the members of the City Council voted on the Elon and the Breakwater, because that was a nasty thing that happened. $300 million? Where did that all go? So every single time I drive up Beach Boulevard in Ellis, as well as you guys, you guys should look at all those vacancies on the bottom floor. Whoever thought that was a good idea to purchase that, you know? In the federal government, we had the White House. We look at the White House, that's ours, that's the people's. Well, as a, as a resident of Huntington Beach, I look at the Elon and all those vacancies as that's mine, and as well as you guys. What happened to that? Where's, where's all the transparency there? I hope to see transparency, transparency soon. Another thing, I'd like to read a quote. "I will defund schools that are teaching woke ideology to any of our students and ban the use of critical theory, race theory, on our students." Guess who that is? Yeah, that's what's going to happen, you know? He says he's going to defund the, the Board of Education. He's serious. I go one step further. I say pull your kids out of public school. Seriously. Pull them out of, hit them where, hit them where it hurts in the pocketbook. I know that they're closing schools right now, and that's what I advocate for, because I don't want somebody, I mean, look at all these people who advocate and support AB 1955. They're all applauding. They were all applauding. Where are they now? That's what I thought, they're a bunch of cat ladies, they're a bunch of cat women. They don't have kids. Yeah, you, they're right up here. You see them. So, hey, I support the mayor, and I've supported her for a long time. She's been in this fight, and she's been fighting this fight in the school system for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council. My name is Kenny Inoue. I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for over 50 years. Tonight, I'd like to discuss some facts concerning the finances of our dear city. At the City Council meeting of June the 4th, the City Council approved a budget which projected a deficit of almost $33 million for the four years ended June 30th, 2028. This projected deficit does not include future salary increases for marine safety, non-sworn employees, police officers, and fire department employees, which will be determined when their contracts expire through the December 31st, 2026 year. In addition, this deficit does not include the future bond payments that will be required as a result of money's borrowed to pay for needed repairs, replacement of our infrastructure. As a result of these facts, I respectfully request on behalf of all of us here today that this take, this City Council take the time to prepare an analysis of what the city can do to address these problems now. I acknowledge Agenda Item Number 32, which is a start to addressing this problem. Thank you. If the City Council fails to address these issues now, the city may have to make drastic changes in policy that could have been avoided had you made these changes in analysis now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name is Harry McLaughlin. I live in Huntington Beach. Stopping by the beach on a summer evening with apologies to Robert Frost, whose town this is, I think I know. He carpetbagged his way down from Sacramento. He's only briefly stopping here to fill his coffers up with dough. He wants to go back in November. He hopes the voters won't remember. He stole a bunch of campaign funds, fined 40 grand, yet still he runs. With four complicit MAGA fools, he came down here and changed the rules. They took away the people's choices with four three votes silenced their voices. Behind closed doors, they met in stealth to further plunder the city's wealth. With the airshow settlement well in tow, they hoped to hide their quid pro quo. But Gina sued, a judge agreed. By law, they had to expose their greed. They feathered Kelly Elliott's nest with taxpayer dollars, a fine war chest. Now they're in the cover-up zone, scrambling because their skullduggery is known. The sea is lovely dark and deep. Investigations forthcoming, they shall not sleep. Justice is coming, and they all shall weep. Justice is coming, boys and girls. Slowly, but it comes.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Debra Felice, Huntington Beach resident. I'm here tonight because of a post I read on the ever-popular Nextdoor app the other day, by our dear mayor for the, to the ability to waste more of our time on this Assembly Bill, which seems more like just a way to deflect from the airshow settlement debacle. First, on the parents' right to know. If you're doing your job as a parent, it's your responsibility to have a relationship with your child that makes it safe enough for your child to talk to you. It is not a school's job to make your relationship with your child one that is safe enough for them to talk to you. But all that aside, the last time I feel obligated to dedicate the small amount of time I have with my family in the evenings was when Ms. Vandermark was on her weird porn in the library rant. I showed up tonight because I am disgusted at what the City Council has achieved. You have failed to unite the city. You have put our city into debt. It seems that your idea of good things for Huntington Beach is just to give your campaign donors gifts from the Bank of Huntington Beach. I believe if you had to pay this out of your own bank accounts, your decisions would have been quite different. The sad part is, all of you have the title of City Council members. Emphasis on the word "city." You are elected by the residents of Huntington Beach to do what is best for our city, not as what, not what is best for your individual gains. I know Tony has big dreams of moving beyond our city to become a state senator. Maybe Kevin Elliott is even your campaign manager. But Tony, while you're here, do the job you were elected to do. The majority of this council has acted like a bunch of babies. They're willing to, unwilling to work with anyone that does not agree with their agenda, even though there are three people who are also elected by the people of Huntington Beach. Wouldn't it be fun, wouldn't it be fun if you acted like grown-ups and were able to work together and compromise instead of just smiling in your majority and ramming your agenda down everyone else's throats? We do have issues here. Homelessness, crime, trash, out-of-control e-bikers, illegal short-term renters, lack of police force, and a shortage of city funds, which I do believe are all something this City Council could put a dent in. If we were only willing to do what is best for the city, not the state, not the church, not their personal gain. Going forward, consider this. Stop suing the state. Start compromising. Start treating each other like you would your friends and your family, at least family members like...
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Hello, Catherine Goddard, and many of you know I've been watching this council for oh, well over a year and a half. And the things that you voted, that we voted and elected you on was transparency, and I have yet to see that happen. There is the four-three majority that simply seems to operate without the benefit of the input from three people that I personally voted for. So it's not something that I feel is effective for us and not for any of you either. But what I would ask you to do is to begin now to honor the idea of transparency. Somehow, an agreement has been signed, which looks like the most egregious thing done yet, since you all have assumed the dais. I suggest that you pass the 24, item 31, and have an independent audit of what was done for this bill from the oil two, three years ago. Please have this done so that we can be assured that what you did was somehow to the benefit of the citizens of Huntington Beach, because it appears not to be so. It appears to benefit one person, and that person appears to be a colleague of the five of you. So I urge you to vote this. If there's nothing in there that we need to be concerned about, it should be perfectly fine to have an independent audit of this. Please do let us understand what happened with the settlement from the airshow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Joyce O'Reilly, a member of the Christian community. Jesus said, "I am the light of the world. Whoever believes in me shall not walk in darkness, but have the light of light." Thank you for enforcing Christian principles in two crucial areas. Number one, the fundamental right of parents to know what their children are learning in school and to bring them up as they see fit, and to support Israel, the land which God gave to the Jewish people ages ago. And when we bless Israel, we are blessed. And so, thank you for being the light, because the light is always... And so, thank you for being the light, because the light is always stronger than the darkness. Good is always stronger than evil. And when we do what Jesus said, "Let your light shine before men, that they may see your good deeds and give glory to their Father in heaven," we overcome, and we glorify our Lord God. So thank you for doing this, and keep it up.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Thirty-five-year resident of Huntington Beach, unlike a lot of people here. Here's a message to parents claiming that they want to protect kids. Be a parent. Create a space for open dialogue. Get off your phones, get off your social media, cancel your Botox appointments, get off the golf course and talk to your kids. Stop making teachers and schools the scapegoat for your bad parenting. You don't know what's going on with your kid? That's not a teacher's problem. If your kids can't turn to you or talk to you, that's your fault. You're failing as a parent. Teachers wish you were a better parent, they really do. They want to teach. They didn't sign up to be an informant. They didn't sign up to be compensated for your crappy parenting. They do not want to get involved in your family drama. If your kids are not talking to you, that's a you problem. Do not try to blame teachers for that. And speaking of drama, this entire city council clown show is just an attempt to distract the public with faux outrage, once again pretending this is city business. The city clowns a majority plus Gates continues to attempt this distraction because they don't want to answer to the taxpaying public in this town about the disgusting heist, the biggest heist in Huntington Beach government history. We need a complete audit and investigation into this massive giveaway to the majority's friend and donor Kevin Elliott. We need to know why they decided to hand over five million dollars plus parking RV spots, city revenue just poof right into Kevin Elliott's bank account, taxpayers foot the bill for half a million dollar airshow, environmental impact report? Why are we paying for that? We handed all this to their best buddy, all of this for one day of a canceled airshow, one day. Five million plus all that, crazy. Tony Baloney, you gave Mr. Elliott more than the key to the city. You gave him the combination to the safe.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, good evening, my name is Oscar. Good evening, Mayor Gracie, council members. Thank you so much for bringing this proposition. I'm in favor of parents' right to know. I'm also a result of immigrants like Mayor Gracie. My parents came to this country because they wanted a better life, and they came to a country that was free, considered to be freedom, right? So I think, I think passing or having this kind of law in the state is kind of productive to having freedom, being able to raise your kids the way you feel like raising them. And that's just kind of the general rule when it comes to like the First Amendment, you know, just Fourth Amendment. So we'll see what happens with court, and I'm sure we'll win in God's favor. But, but coming down to a local level, the city of Huntington Beach has always been known to be a, you know, certain type of U.S.A., it's been, it's been known to be like a happy place to come for the weekend, hang out and stuff. And I remember like during the twenty-twenty lockdowns, everything else was closed down, and we were able to come down Main Street and, you know, and be able to have some dinner, some drinks and stuff. And I remember my birthday came on during May of twenty-twenty, and it was, everything was open, right? So it felt like, it felt like America, it felt like freedom, right? And I know sometimes doing the right thing is kind of hard, it's not easy, you know, but I know four years ago, you guys didn't, didn't, you know, didn't enforce any of totalitarian rules that Newsom had ordered you guys to do as mandates, you know, you guys didn't enforce them, you know? Some people were able to live in Huntington Beach, be able to have dinner and have a good time in Main Street, and I was able to enjoy that. So I would say it's happening again. You know, it's time for a city that's a pine hill, a city that has some values, that stands on principles, do the right thing. And I know maybe, but might say, it won't change, but you know what? You could start a little fire. You could, you could be the spark, you could be the igniter that causes this, this state and this country to wake up, because they're after our kids, right? And years ago, it would have never happened, so all these people that, that are running around with masks, scared of their own shadow, were not out on twenty-twenty. They were scared, they were hiding, right? And we know that all that was, a lot of it was bogus, and we know that people that stood their ground.
Thank you. All right. Rin Edwards, Russ Neal, Mary Jo Berettish, Sylvia Shabat, Libby, Pablo Ospas, Sonia Green, Joey Macassir, Ava Weiss, Manuk Gagorian, Shan Kay, Ryan Salter, Paula Schaper. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rin, and I'm here to talk about opposition to the right to know. I was born and raised here in Huntington Beach. I went to our public school system, Perry, Dwyer, HBHS, even Golden West. I am transgender. That is who I am, and I support my peers. It's deeply saddening to see that not everybody's parents were as supportive as mine, and some of these kids really struggled with their self-esteem. I was luckily that I was part of the Gay Straight Alliance in high school, I was the club president, and the horror stories that I've heard from these children about how abusive and horrible their parents were to them is heartbreaking. If we are to force these teachers to out them to their parents, it's gonna rise in abuse and suicide, and it's, it's just truly horrible to think about. This is not an issue of children not being ready to have a conversation about their sexuality. This is an issue about parents not being able to handle this topic in a compassionate manner. Forced outing will lead to these rises in abuse. Additionally, our teachers already have an unrealistic workload. They're being screamed at by a parent over pronouns, and that's not part of their job description. We should get more counseling in schools, and people who are qualified to speak about this kind of stuff, it's vastly unfair. Yes, they are mandated reporters, but that, you know, has to do with them being sexually abused or trafficked, and it has nothing to do with their sexuality. Also, this is completely unenforceable. How would you make something like this mandatory? You can't control every single individual teacher, and it's also a matter of the school district, not the mayor or city council. If we're actually concerned about the future of these children, we need to give them better education.
Thank you. Go ahead.
At the last council meeting, my public comments ended with the words, "We need an investigation." I'm happy that council members Cal MacMose and Bolton heard me and are proposing that, just that. The airshow settlement seems to be a massive giveaway of public funds to a political ally. I hope that is not true, and that the council members that advocated for the settlement will be proven to have been working in the best interests of the city. The only way to know that is to contract with an independent third-party auditor to report the actual losses incurred by the airshow for eliminating a single day in twenty-twenty-one, and the reasonable liability to the city for that cancellation. It is so important to have confidence in our leaders, and the only way to do that is with the transparency that was promised in their election campaign. Keep your promises and pass item thirty-one. Now we have an agenda item that was clearly placed as a distraction from the airshow settlement, Gracie's ridiculous parents' right to know ordinance. First of all, I think it's really weird that Gracie thinks the city should co-parent our kids. I thought she supported the conservative movement and small government. Secondly, AB nineteen fifty-four, fifty-five does not require teachers to keep secrets from parents. Teachers, as always, are free to talk to parents about any concerns they have about their students. That's what builds a good parent-teacher-student relationship. The bill simply prevents schools and cities from creating rules and policies that require teachers to disclose a student's gender concerns, just like in the olden days. Please defeat item thirty. And by the way, parents are always free to go look at the curriculum for their students. Please also defeat item thirty-two. It is a transparent attempt to create a biased report. The request is only for the expense side of large projects, and specifically avoids asking for the benefit side of the equation. Don't buy into the propaganda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead. Go ahead.
My name is Rin, and I'm speaking on behalf of Pride at the Pier. Pride at the Pier stands in opposition of agenda item number thirty. This item is not only a very clear attempt to distract from the council's lack of accountability over the Pacific airshow settlement, it's based on a critically untrue interpretation of AB nineteen fifty-five. We were deeply involved in the legislative action to pass this law, and are stunned at the overt effort to misrepresent it. Vandermark states in the memo for this item that AB nineteen fifty-five, quote, "prevents educators from informing parents of their child's gender identity or gender expression," end quote. This is, at best, a deep misunderstanding of the law, and at worst, a lie. This law does not prevent educators from informing parents of their child's gender identity, and prevents school boards from requiring educators to do so. Teachers can still have these conversations under AB nineteen fifty-five based on their own discretion. We are highly concerned that Vandermark has chosen to repeatedly spread the lie that so directly fuels anti-LGBTQ+ statement, sentiment. The mayor's involvement in anti-transgender activism has been well-known since before her time in office. On the council, she and the rest of the council majority have repeatedly pushed forward anti-LGBTQ+ rhetoric from the dais. We do not believe that the concerns of the council majority are anything but another attempt to use your authority to further harm the LGBTQ+ constituents you are meant to serve. Not only that, but there's also the issue of simple jurisdiction. This council has zero jurisdiction over ed policy, and no claim in lawsuits regarding AB nineteen fifty-five. It's therefore shocking that the council would consider assigning the city attorney to this pointless task. Mayor Vandermark.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Paulo Ospas, and I'm Huntington Beach resident for fifteen years, and I support the item twenty-five, dash, five, four, seven, for auditing and review the total cost of the Pacific airshow. Since the agreement with the operators has been released, I completely understand the reason why Mr. Gates, yes, you, Mr. Gates, I'm talking to you. Mr. Gates didn't want to give, to give details to the residents. Mr. Gates, it is ironic that you have signed the topic agreements, because regarding your background in law, it doesn't seem that it is the best decision for Huntington Beach. In, in reality, you didn't want to protect Huntington Beach, you just, you want, you protect yourself. Mr. Strickland, you are always talking about the revenue for the airshow, for the city, that is wonderful. Well, this is a great opportunity for you to prove the revenue, you are always mentioning that it is correct and accurate. So approve, approve that, vote yes for that. If the agreement is so great, don't be afraid about that. So if you really believe in transparency, please vote, vote yes for the item twenty-five, five, four, seven. Because I have a few seconds more about your proposal, Mayor Vandermark. Congratulations, you're a genius. Because, yeah, you're a genius, because it's something like, the main thing we have here in Huntington Beach is this agreement with the airshow. You come here with light, and people are talking about a different, about, about something that it is not related with the city. You know, that's wonderful, that's, that's why I really appreciate that you are so, so, so smart. But after listening, after listening, the people who are supporting you, I only want to say one thing, all those who are supporting you, I agree, I agree with something, please.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Ava Weiss, I'm from Huntington Beach. Good evening, all of you. I am supporting the agenda, the, the agenda thirty, the parent notification on any gender issue for the child, and I'm thanking those of you who are involved with that. But beyond that, shouldn't the mayor and the council member focusing more on our public, public work issues? I have potholes on my street, on Pier Street, potholes, and I called the public work department. No one picked up the phone, I left message, no one called me back. I mentioned on Memorial Day to the front of the council member about the bathroom issue on the beach at the Pier Plaza. I was told they are working on it, and it is a lot of money. Isn't lawsuits a lot of money also? But somehow the city find money for it. I was told a lot of people used to it, used that, that day, and I was there this morning, nine AM, for the opening, and the toilet flooded to the top, everything in it, urine on the floor, the smell is disgusting. We have visitors here from all over the world, special and special events like today. It is undignifying for a person to step into those bathrooms. I am asking the city council, please, find time and money for fix it. Thank you.
Ms. Weiss, could you please fill out a blue card with your contact information so we can reach out to you? Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. Driving the controversies over the airshow, housing policy, and now also child sexuality, we see the abnormal compulsion of unhappy people to seek to destroy other people's happiness. They run to the Coastal Commission to shut down the airshow just because other people like it. They tell us the housing crisis requires the destruction of happy neighborhoods, but that nothing can be built on undeveloped land. And now we see people unhappy with their own sexuality, driven to drag other people into their misery. They enlist government schools and libraries to violate the sexual innocence of children behind their parents' backs. As recent studies, like the CAS report, have shown, there is no clinical evidence supporting so-called gender-affirming care. This has led countries like Britain and the Scandinavian countries to back off of this child sexual mutilation craze, while our California Democrats double down. We are dealing here more with psychological issues than with political ones. I endorse item thirty submitted by our happy warrior, Mayor Gracie, and oppose item thirty-one submitted by our chronically unhappy council minority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead. Okay, we have a speaker waiting to speak, thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Sylvia Shabat, and I support Mayor Vandermark's agenda item thirty. I do not have children of my own, but I have been a teacher for over twenty years. I believe that not disclosing issues like gender identity or pronoun choice to parents causes division between parent and child. It encourages children to keep secrets and vital information from their parents. When you tell minors that it's okay to keep vital information from their parents, you're not just saying that keeping this information is okay, but you're also saying that keeping other information from them, like having sex and things like that are, is okay too. Minors are then left without their parents' support and guidance on how to navigate these major life issues, and then what happens is they turn to other people that And then what happens is they turn to other people that don't love them like their parents do, like school personnel, so-called friends, YouTubers, and people on TikTok. This is a dangerous path because others will not necessarily have children's best interests at heart. Let the parents who brought their children into this world have the right to raise their own children with complete transparency between them. Another point I want to make is that if parents are required by law to provide food, clothing, shelter, and many, many other things to their children, then no one should dare cause alienation between parent and child. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Joey MacAskey. I am a member of the California chapter of Gays Against Groomers, a 501(c)(4) nonprofit organization consisting of gays, lesbians, and others in the community who oppose the sexualization, indoctrination, and mutilation of children under the guise of radical LGBTQIA activism. We want to express our full and unequivocal support for the ordinance proposed by Mayor Gracy Van der Mark. Contrary to claims made by opponents, this ordinance will not adversely affect the LGBTQIA+ community. AB 1955 violates the 14th Amendment, which guarantees parents or legal guardians sole authority over their children. The notion that this bill is meant to protect children from punishment or ostracization by their parents is misleading. Teachers and staff are already mandated reporters. If they suspect a parent or guardian is harming or may harm a child due to that child's identity, they are legally required to report these concerns to the appropriate authorities. AB 1955 effectively enables school districts to act as both guardian and judge, presuming parental guilt until innocence is proven, which contradicts state and federal law. This claim, the claim that AB 1955 protects a child's privacy is flat-out misleading. While privacy is important, it cannot exist when a child's gender identity or sexual orientation is known by their peers and school staff, but only from their parent, kept only from their parents. This bill does not safeguard privacy, rather it creates deliberate divides between children and their parents or guardians. AB 1955 is facing legal challenges and it will be deemed unconstitutional. What must be considered here this evening is the harm to families and children that will occur under AB 1955 until this unconstitutional and reckless bill is overturned. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm Sonia Green, and I wanted to come here and support Mayor Gracy Van der Mark in your ordinance against AB 1955. God gave children parents for a reason. And in the Ten Commandments, it says, "Honor thy mother and father." It doesn't say, "Honor Gavin Newsom and teachers." I also wanted to say, the young gentleman that was up here earlier who said, "Hey, listen, it's none of your business." You're right, it's none of the teachers' business, and neither is it the governor's business, and neither is it the government business, period. It's the parents' business, the relationship between the child. Which brings me to the next point. I am so happy about the individual that was up here, that was very proud to announce that they were transgender and that they were so proud that they had parents that understood. Now just think if Gavin Newsom took away that parental right, then what would happen? Gracy, you did a great job. Congratulations to the Fab Four, I hope the rest of you get on board. We don't want any more CRT in our schools, our kids need to get back to learning, they don't need to know how to have sex with who and why and whatever, at such a young age, they need to know how to read, they need to know how to write, and our Black and Brown communities are not getting that, and you know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Hello, board, mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Manu Gregorian, I'm the father of four beautiful twin daughters. I migrated from Soviet Union, okay, in 1987, I'm a refugee from Soviet Union. Gentlemen told me I looked too young to be from Soviet Union, so thank you. Yeah, and to call me fascist, I'm a commie, get that shit straight, okay? Excuse for my language. Second of all, I am very disgusted by this opposition here today. There are no manner, we had a young man, a young man, under the age of 18 probably, speaking here today, instead of acting like a grown-ups, a young man came to a grown-up meeting, what did we do? Act like fools, like they are acting right now. I want to thank you, mayor, for adopting this resolution, parents must know. Keeping secrets from parents is not the way, this is not an honoring process. If my child, a daughter, goes to school and says, "I identify as a bully, I decide to crush everybody's head today." Is the school gonna notify me or they gonna allow this child to be a bully? Because if they notify me, then you're breaking the law. But how are you not gonna notify me, my child is being a bully? This goes with everything. Whatever my children go through in school, please just know, I trust you with seven hours of my children's life to you guys. If you're gonna keep secrets, why am I trusting you? Like seriously, think about it. When I take my children to my brother's house, I ask them, what did they do? Did they eat? Did they sleep? Did they do their homework? Did they play on the computer? Did they eat chocolate? What the, what did my children do? Were they mannerful? They tell me everything and I work with my children. They tell us, hey, your children would come out here if you were great parents. I was a child, I kept everything secret from my parents.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you, time's up. Time's up.
Your time is up, sir. Next speaker? Go ahead. Okay, just, just a second. We have a speaker waiting to speak. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm, I'm here in support of the parents' right to know. Parents' right to know and parental notification policies are not forced outing policies. Gender dysphoria is a class, is classified in the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Health Disorders.
Please, please stop, pause your time. Go ahead, ma'am, sorry about that.
Thank you. Gender dysphoria is in the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Health Disorders, the same as suicidal ideation, but kids don't always tell their parents if they are suffering in that kind of way. The parents in here that claim that you only have a, a good relationship with your kids if they're willing to tell you something, well, that's a shame because there are lots of parents who have no idea or didn't see the signs that their kids would have committed suicide, but they did. Also within that manual is anxiety and depression and many other mental health disorders that if a school board or a school district or, you know, a teacher, staff were to find out, they would tell you. There, the only thing that a school or the state doesn't want you to know is if your child is suffering from gender dysphoria. So that's our biggest question is, why is that? Well, at a million dollars a child and lifelong medicalization of children, it's always follow the money. The parents in here who may have, or anywhere who may have a child that has gender dysphoria or is gender confused and is going through something like that, they would never, ever want their child to go through that alone. The rest of us parents don't get to be vilified from the very beginning, innocent until proven guilty. We have the right to know what is happening with our kids, we have the right to know if this gender dysphoria that is accompanied a lot of the times by anxiety and depression.
Go ahead.
City Council, my name is Paula Schaefer, longtime resident of the city. The majority city council campaign in 2022 talked about saving the airshow, unleashing city attorney Gates, once again his absent, and rolling out the red carpet for Huntington Beach businesses. As a result, Huntington Beach residents are stuck with the airshow settlement agreement. Here's how I think the closed-session discussions may have taken place, resulting in this grift that's been perpetrated on the Huntington Beach residents. Gates didn't disclose the complete terms of the settlement agreement to the city council in closed session. And/or maybe the Fab Four never asked any questions and simply accepted Gates' brief summary of the terms as the best deal for the city. And/or Tony Strickland knew of the full terms of the settlement agreement and/or maybe the Fab Four knew of the entire full terms of the settlement agreement and voted for it anyway. And/or the airshow maybe had a more competent and highly skilled attorney. And/or unfortunately, Mr. Gates missed my comment again tonight, Mr. Gates is incompetent. Or maybe this is what the city council majority members intended when they talked about rolling out the red carpet and resulting in a complete giveaway of money to the airshow company. Is this really what you meant when you talked about promises made, promises kept? That's McKean's tagline all the time, but he's not here to listen. I urge you to please vote yes on item number 31, we need an audit of this, we need to have the city residents be, you know, confident that you made this decision that is in the best interest of the city. Because right now, nobody believes you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Neil. First of all, I've nearly fallen down those stairs a handful of times, and with the utmost respect to all the speakers who are here, I'm 30 years younger than most of the people who are using it, so we really should do something about that before there's another serious injury. Second of all, children are not the property of their parents. They have their own personhood and they have their own rights, and they have the ability to make decisions about their identity and who they express it with. If you are afraid of your child not talking to you about their identity, you are acknowledging that you have created a hostile or unsafe environment where your own child does not trust you with their joys and their hopes and their fears. And given the displays that we have seen here tonight, I really cannot blame them. Having a safe space to explore and experience oneself with one's peers is so crucial to development and self-conception. At the end of the day, the behaviors displayed here will not stop your child from being gay or trans. All they will do is destroy the trust between you and your children when they are afraid to share themselves or their friends with you. To all the queer students of Huntington Beach who don't have loving, affirming parents, I am so, so sorry. You deserve much better, and I wish you safety and love as you grow and live your truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes, we're done.
Okay, thank you. Council member, council committee appointments and announcement, do, does any council member have any appointment to announce? Okay. AB 1234 reporting, does anyone have anything to report? Openness in negotiations, does anyone have anything to disclose? City managers report, staff, please proceed with your report.
Assistant City Manager Travis Hopkins will present two items. Thank you, Chief Para. The first item I'd like to mention is, I would like to take a minute to thank Sunny Hahn for the services she provided for the city of Huntington Beach. She's accepted a position at another, another city and will be moving on. And I would like to really just give a little bit of her background and all the services she provided. She's currently the chief financial officer and has served in that position since last July. She's also had held many other positions, she came to the city in 2010. She has served as the assistant CFO, project manager, senior administrative analyst, and a senior accountant. She has been a large part of ensuring the financial stability of the city over, over those multiple years, guiding the city through multiple budgets, working on the Finance Commission, participating in negotiations and bargaining groups. So I'd just like to, everybody, the city council and the community to join, and join me in thanking her for her dedicated service for the city and wishing her success in her new position.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a streamlined Surf City update, and this will be provided by Jasmine Daly, our community development building official.
Good evening, mayor, city council members, I'll be presenting the update on our streamlined Surf City project. So our streamlined Surf City is a large-scale effort to provide the most readily available, efficient, and user-friendly services in relation to all development services and permitting. It goes beyond an in-person one-stop shop and extends to a wide range of services comprised of 28 initiatives to improve the permitting process. As of today, 12 of the 28 initiatives have been completed and eight are currently in progress. The online availability of information, applications, permits, and inspection scheduling has eliminated many visits to City Hall. With the popularity of online services, focus has shifted away from the in-person one-stop-shop services and instead towards the overall customer service experience, with an emphasis on the largest service model, online servicing. This chart reflects a comparison of our in-person versus online customer volume. Prior to launching online services, our community development department had a total of 110 customers visiting us in-person daily in 2019. Since the launch of online services, those numbers have continued to decline, and as of today, we see only 12 customers in-person daily on average per day. Over 90% of our customers are choosing to solely utilize online services. This has shifted our focus to realize that we need to enhance our services online. Our milestone map reflects the 28 initiatives in streamlined Surf City. The 12 Phase 1 completed items include items such as electronic plan review, expedited plan review, our customer queuing system, Q-List, and updating our website. We're currently in Phase 2 of our project with items in progress such as instant re-roof permits, our ACA fine-tuning upgrades, and a mobile app that allows for inspection scheduling. Phase 3 items will be incoming as Phase 2 items progress. Over this past year, we've had several key accomplishments. We were one of the first cities in Orange County to launch instant solar permits through a collaboration with the Solar App Plus program. This allows customers to bypass the standard plan review and permit issuance timeframes and receive their solar permits instantly. We've also eliminated our paper inspection job cards and replaced those with a digital version that allows multiple users on a project to see their inspection results, see their approvals, and view that status in real-time 24/7. We've also implemented customer satisfaction surveys throughout different points in a project, including business license issuance, permit issuance, and project completion. These surveys are vital for us to understand what's going right and any areas we can improve upon. We have regular reporting and analysis of data, and we've hired one additional city plan checker. This allows us to keep more plan reviews in-house, reviewed by city staff, and minimizing the amount of plans we're sending to outside consultants. And we recently implemented expedited plan review, allowing eligible projects to receive their plan reviews in half the normal time. Our streamlined specialist team was launched in January of 2024, and this team is a team of representatives from each development services department dedicated to helping businesses navigate the permitting process and ultimately obtain their certificate of occupancy faster. The team essentially is a virtual one-stop shop, allowing applicants to schedule appointments and conduct virtual sessions with permitting and plan check specialists across every development department. It adds a personal touch that is welcoming and supportive to new businesses in the city. Our team of streamlined specialists is made up of the most senior staff from all of our development departments, including development departments, including community development, public works, business license, and fire prevention. Over the past year, the data that we have tracked has shown quite a few successes. First, our certificate of occupancy issuance is up by 23% compared to this time last year. That means more businesses are opening in Huntington Beach. Our solar app permitting makes up 70% of all of our solar permits, our instant solar apps. Our customer satisfaction surveys have been overwhelmingly positive. We currently have a 98.3% satisfaction rate. Our Streamline Specialist Team has a 100% success rate since their pilot launch in January. Our in-house plan review team is meeting their turnaround goals 100% of the time. And perhaps the most telling fact is that other cities are recognizing what we're doing, and they have reached out to us. We've had three different cities reach out and ask if they can tour our services and have us demo these innovative services and learn how they can implement them in their cities. And finally, some of the cool features in the horizon are instant re-roof permits. With the popularity of our instant solar permits, the most time-sensitive permit we probably have are re-roofs. Especially during the rainy season, people need these permits quickly. We're implementing an instant re-roof permit that would bypass the time that it takes for a staff member to review and issue that permit, and a customer could receive that instantly. We're also providing automated permit issuance upon payment, so customers do not have to wait for staff members to issue and send them their permit. And finally, from our surveys, the most asked request is a better way to schedule inspections on a mobile phone. We are in the works of creating a mobile app that allows for inspection scheduling and in addition allows for them to schedule multiple inspections at a time. It also provides mobile notifications when the inspector is on the way. These features are all in the works, and we're hoping to launch them in the next few months. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do any council members have questions? Councilmember McKean.
Thank you, Jasmine. This is amazing. This is one of the four points of the contract that we signed with the voters of Huntington Beach to cut the red tape and roll out the red carpet for businesses. We get critiques about why aren't you guys focusing on city business, so here we go. This is very near and dear to my heart because I'm in the real estate development industry with jurisdictions across the country, and so I've seen ones that do it well and most that do it poorly. So we've all worked with staff very hard to streamline this, hence the name Streamline. We took a visit out to Riverside initially to look at their one-stop-shop program. Didn't make sense. They spent a ton of money on physically like improving their permit department, and staff was astute to see that most obviously plans are being processed online. So a lot of things they're presenting tonight is cutting edge. I mean, the fact that we increased the certificate of occupancy issuance 23% in one year is amazing. I've always complained, and my colleagues that I campaigned with, that, you know, the longer it takes a business to get their permits from the city is longer that we're not receiving sales tax dollars, that we're not creating jobs. So this is a very impressive program. A lot of residents have reached out to me telling me how much better it is. So I really want the community to really focus on this streamlined process. It's cutting edge. The fact that other cities are reaching out to learn about it is amazing. Jasmine, one question I had is some residents still are kind of getting stuck sometimes, and I've pointed them to Streamline. Is there a certain number they should call? Is it the specialist team?
Yes, definitely call the specialist team. There's a direct line to specialists. They do answer the phone because there's multiple specialists assigned to that phone line all day long, and then they also have a direct email that's monitored all day long as well.
Is that the 375-5142 number?
Yes, correct.
So that's the direct number. If you guys get stuck, your project, I always point people to this business card, to this number, call them, you'll get unstuck. Again, it's, and then the last, I guess, when do you think the last phases will be completed?
I'm hoping to get through most of the Phase 2 items, you know, within the next three to six months is my goal, and then slowly incorporate the final items. So, I mean, I'd like to get them all done today, but I mean realistically, maybe another year or so.
Cool. And again, like, I develop across the country. I don't know one city that is doing this. Like, all these facets, I ask every single time, can we do expedited plan check review? That's not an option. This, we now have that, and along with this efficiency of submitting plans and issuance of COOs and getting our businesses opening faster and creating jobs, creating more revenue to our community is huge. I'm very proud of it, and I thank you guys for working so hard on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions? Thank you for the report.
Thank you. I do have one thing. Sorry.
Go ahead.
First, I just wanted to thank you. I think when the city does good work as a team within different departments and comes together and provides innovation and efficiencies, that is exactly what we want the city team members to do. So thank you for that work. I do want to thank Al Zelenka, who's not here anymore, for also bringing the one-stop-shop idea that they had implemented in Riverside to the city of Huntington Beach, talking about it, talking it up, bringing us out to Riverside, letting us see a different version of things. There's definitely different solutions for different places, and that helped to inspire, I think, kind of the things that have been happening. But then you guys didn't stop there. You're continuing to move forward, and so we really do appreciate that. Thank you. The other thing is, and she left, I wanted to say to Sunny, who hopefully can hear me somewhere, Sunny, I just wanted to commend her for her professionalism, her expertise, and her calm in very difficult circumstances, just in a difficult position. We are losing more than her 14 years of institutional knowledge, though I think it's important to note that that 14 years of institutional knowledge and her position as a CFO is a massive loss to the city of Huntington Beach. We wish Sunny good health, happiness, success, and peace as you move forward. So thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Moser. Okay, it's our turn. Thank you. Is that it? Councilmember Moser? Does anybody else? Okay. Moving on to the city treasurer's report. City treasurer, please proceed with your report.
report for the period ending June 30th, 2024. Just to give you a little background and economic update, as of both the June and July meeting, the Federal Reserve continued holding interest rates steady. The most recent labor report showed a slowing in hiring, down about 114,000 jobs added in July, and an uptick in the employment rate from 4.1 in June to 4.3 in July. With continued expectations of slower economic growth, cooler inflation, continuing geopolitical risk, election and market volatility, it is currently anticipated that the Fed will lower rates at their next meeting in September. Currently, the funds within the portfolio are invested with overnight availability in the camp or California asset management program and a money market fund. Other funds are invested in U.S. Treasuries, super nationals, the U.S. agencies, and corporate bonds. Only the investment types allowed under the California Government Code, Section 53601 in the city's investment policy are utilized. It must be noted that at times, people review the portfolio and review the returns and compare them to, say, their 401K or personal investments, and we have to remember that public fund investing is much different from your personal investing. There are state laws, California rules, that require us to follow the code and invest only in those things that cannot lose money. So that excludes those things like stocks, mutual funds, ETFs, and other such investments. So please keep that in mind when you are reviewing the portfolio. You can see the information that is required in the investment policy statement. That is on the city treasurer's website. So if you'd like to take a look at that, that would give you a little more guidance as to public fund investing. As of June 30th, the book value of the portfolio was 389.1 million with a market value of 380.2 million. As of June 30th, the portfolio was invested 42% in U.S. agencies, 21% in U.S. Treasuries, about 13% in both the corporate bonds and super nationals, and approximately 11% in camp and money market fund. This chart shows that as of June 30th, approximately 35% of the portfolio will mature in zero to one year. That's the blue plus the purple portions. Adding in maturities through two years, which is the orange section, accounts for over 63% of the portfolio maturing in zero to two years. Approximately 17% of the portfolio matures on the longer end, between three and five For the quarter ending June 30th, one supranational was purchased for 10 million, two U.S. Treasuries matured totaling 12 million, two U.S. agencies matured totaling 10 million, and one corporate bond matured for 5 million. In July, while you don't see this in this report, in order to lock in some of the higher rates, we invested an additional 10 million out to June of 2029 with yields in the range of 4.1 to 4.6%. Earnings for the month of June 2024 were 984,580, an increase of approximately 35% from the same month in the prior year. Full fiscal year 2023-24 earnings of a little over 10 million were up approximately 70% from the previous fiscal year. These higher earnings were due both to the increase in interest rates and the higher average balance of the portfolio. The effective rate of return for June was 3.04%, with a fiscal year-to-date return of 2.67%. Because the monthly rate at 3.04% is higher than the total for the whole year, you can see that the rate of the portfolio is increasing. For the quarter ending June 30th, the portfolio was in compliance with the investment policy and all relevant state codes. You can find additional information on the investment portfolio, as I earlier mentioned, on the city's website on the city treasurer's page under investments. And as I also mentioned, the annual investment report is posted there as well as the monthly and quarterly investment reports. With that, this concludes my report. Thank you again for your time and opportunity, and please let me know if there are any questions.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your presentation.
Would anyone like to move to receive and file?
Oh, yes, I'd like to make motion to receive and file.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Councilmember Moser?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Count Mick?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0, thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys reporter, would you please proceed with your reports?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Four different topics tonight, two on the housing lawsuit cases, and then also the Grants Pass Supreme Court case, and then also the community prosecutor computer, excuse me, the prosecutor program annual report. And so I'm gonna, I've got a PowerPoint for the fourth. I'm just gonna read a small report for the first three. On the housing laws case that the city filed in March of 2023 in federal court against the state of California alleging that the high-density regional housing needs laws are unconstitutional, the city's appeal in the Ninth Circuit will be heard end of October or beginning of November on a date that the Ninth Circuit confirms with the parties. Once that date is confirmed by the court, and a link to the hearing is provided by the court, I will share that link with the public, which will provide access to a live stream of the oral arguments presented by the parties at the Ninth Circuit hearing. The city's appeal in the Ninth Circuit seeks to reinstate the federal lawsuit in federal district court, with the city arguing that it has standing to bring the claims asserted, and that the doors of the federal courts should not be closed to our city, the city council, and the then mayor and Mayor Potem, who have valid legitimate claims against the state for violations of federal laws. On the second case, with regard to the state's housing lawsuit against the city alleging that the city had not adopted an updated housing element, the state had demanded in March of 2023 an early trial based on preference, and that the city be forced by court order to adopt an updated housing element within 120 days. Well, the state didn't get what it wanted from the lawsuit. A year and a half after litigating the case, the state court just recently issued a decision recognizing the city is required to update its housing element. Accordingly, the state had submitted a proposed order to the court, which by its terms sought to command the city to adopt a housing element, again, within 120 days, that the court impose all kinds of fees, fines, and penalties, including curtailing the city's land use authority, and that the city be ordered to adopt the state's RENA quota of 13,368 high-density units and place them in certain areas of the city. In June of this year, just a month and a half ago, the court struck most of the state's proposed order. It struck the 120-day requirement. It struck all of the provisions for the fees, fines, and penalties, including curtailing the city's land use authority. Last week, the state returned to court insisting that the court re-insert the provisions for fees, fines, and penalties, including curtailing the city's land use authority. The court, again, now for a second time, denied the state's request. At this point, the court's order provides that the city adopt a housing element within the next 12 months or one year from the issuance of the court's writ. That writ has not been issued yet, so the clock on that has not yet started, and we are evaluating the court's recent orders for appeal issues. For anyone concerned that this lawsuit was costing the city millions of dollars and that it would result in massive fees, fines, penalties, and losses of land use authority, rest assured that after a year and a half of litigation, with the recent court-striking of the punitive aspects of the state's request, now twice, the cost of millions of dollars or losses in fees, fines, and penalties did not materialize, and we have some breathing room now to adopt a housing element. With regard to the third lawsuit, Grants Pass versus Johnson, as the public knows, this was a fresh challenge in the U.S. Supreme Court of the previous 2018 Martin v. Boise decision in the Ninth Circuit dealing with enforcement of anti-camping laws against homeless. Last year, when Grants Pass was being appealed, the city of Huntington Beach was approached to join the petition for writ of certiorari, and then once review granted to join the full Supreme Court appeal by amicus support. Last year, the city council voted for three to join by amicus the U.S. Supreme Court review. As you know, this year, the U.S. Supreme Court reversed the Grants Pass lower court, and as part of its decision, the Supreme Court overturned the holding, excuse me, in Martin v. Boise from 2018. The U.S. Supreme Court now holding that, quote, "the Constitution's Eighth Amendment serves many important functions, but it does not authorize federal judges to wrest those rights and responsibilities from the American people and in their place dictate this nation's homelessness policy," end quote. So this, too, was a win for Huntington Beach. So that was the three lawsuits, and now I'd like to turn to the community.
Didn't they cite us in the Supreme Court?
Yeah, Huntington Beach is cited in the Supreme Court decision.
Thank you.
If I can ask questions about the housing lawsuits before you move on to the community prosecutor report. So thank you for the reports. So I do want to be clear that Huntington Beach was cited in a footnote along with, I stopped counting at 50, other amici. And so I don't want people to think that we expended resources writing a brief for the Supreme Court because we don't have Supreme Court expertise in-house, I don't think. And the best way and the most efficient way to handle this was the way that it was handled, which was to join with other cities who supported the party that petitioned the Supreme Court to hear that case. So with the... So with respect to the state's lawsuit against the city regarding housing, so are you saying that we are not going to have to pay any fees in the future?
I'm just reporting that the court's order struck all of the requests, all of the language for all of the fees, fines, and penalties pursuant to Article 14. The way the process works is, once the writ is issued, the city has a year to adopt a housing element. Once the action pursuant to the writ is taken by the city, then the city goes back and reports back to the court. And at that point, the court would make a decision on what it wants to do with the case, dismiss the case, find that the writ was satisfied. So there's still technically pending litigation, the court still has jurisdiction to watch over it. And so at the end of, whenever the city council takes action on the housing element, that we go back to court. On the amicus case, I just wanted to mention very briefly, the city did submit, and we did this in-house, so no expense for outside counsel, a profile and basically a summary brief to the law firm that was compiling all of the amicus from various cities. My count in the footnote is I think there's a half a dozen cities that were mentioned by amici. I don't think there were 50. There weren't even 50.
No, that footnote, I can show it to you. But, you know.
Okay.
Does it matter?
Anyway, it was gratifying that Huntington Beach was recognized by the U.S. Supreme Court as having been impacted by the Martin v. Boise decision and also homelessness. So I commend counsel for taking the action on that.
So back to my question about the housing lawsuit, though, are you saying that we are no longer liable for penalties from not having a housing element?
Well, there's still a pending portion of the lawsuit, so I'm not gonna...
The answer is yes.
I'm not gonna speculate as to what the court's gonna do after the city returns with its housing element. What I am gonna tell you is what is in fact true, that there's a page and a half of penalties that the court struck. You can see the strike through. I think I even sent you a copy, in fact, you can read that. And then the court, the state went back into court last week and insisted that those be reinserted, in other words, the strike through be taken out, and the court denied them. So I'm just reporting on what has happened in the case. I'm not gonna offer any opinions, any judgments, it's just an update, that what folks who were resisting the lawsuit were clamoring about has not come to fruition.
Yeah. That's why I asked a question. So let's be clear, let's not leave any doubt in people's minds, let's not mislead people. If the answer is we don't know, it's we don't know. And there's nothing wrong with saying that we don't know at this point. I think when we get to the point where, you know, we don't have any more exposure, you know, in terms of possible fines, then we can let the public know that. But I don't think it's fair to kind of leave it, you know, leave people with the impression that we're done, and that, you know, there's no possibility that we would have any fees asserted against us. So we are going to pass a housing element. That is what we said to the court, we're gonna pass a housing element.
So the court issues the writ, and then I confer with counsel, and that's all I'm gonna say about that. Your position that we shouldn't comment on what might lie ahead with pending litigation, I think that's a reasonable position, and that's what I've been saying about people who are offering their opinions about the lawsuit involving the airshow lawsuit and the airshow settlement, reserve opinions, everybody's jumping to conclusions and judgments. So I don't think that's an unreasonable position to take, I just think it should be consistent across the board on all of our lawsuits.
In a July 29th, 2024, Orange County Register article, you were quoted as saying, "Now we have breathing room to put together a housing element and bring it back to the court and to counsel, and go to the court, and let them know what we are able to do without the high-pressure penalties and punitive mechanisms from the state." So all I'm asking is, did we represent to the court that we are gonna pass a housing element? It looks to me like that is the representation that we made. So, you know.
Look, I think what you just read is consistent with what I just said. The city is under an obligation, under the writ, the writ that hasn't been issued yet, but I'm anticipating it's gonna be issued, to adopt a housing element. And if there's any question out there, or any debate, or any mystery, the city of Huntington Beach has never, ever, in all of the years it's engaged in zoning and planning, ever said it was not required to adopt a housing element. It's what's in the housing element that is subject to the city council's discretion. At no point ever has the city taken the position that it didn't need to adopt a housing element. So if you're gonna try to get me to say that we don't need to, or that the court order is somehow not a court order, or we don't have to heed it, I'm not gonna say that.
I just asked you what we're obligated to do, Mr. Gates.
Well, it's in the court order that I sent you.
I just, I wanna make sure that the public understands what it is we're obligated to do, because I do think that there are people who are running around thinking that we don't have to do what the state law requires us to do.
And nobody's ever said that? And the proposed order is a matter of public record, and you're welcome to share it with anybody.
We are required to adopt a housing element, and I think that it's been represented to the court that we are going to do so, so I expect us to do so.
And my statement just now, my statement just now is, I think, pretty unequivocal. I think that's pretty unequivocal, so thank you for that.
I have a question, too, I'm sorry. It's really quick.
Actually, Councilman...
Sure, I'm sorry.
You want her to go first?
I just wanna go back to the city attorney, just based on the last comments. We do have a federal case that's still pending, correct?
Right.
So the state case is separate from the federal case, correct?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. And all you're pointing out is, what we do know, no one can anticipate what the future rulings are gonna be, but what we do know is, it's been before the state court twice, and twice the verdicts have said no punitive damages, correct?
No punitive measures, no punitive measures according to the fees, fines, and penalties that were requested by the state.
And again, we don't know what's gonna come out from the state, but we also don't know what's gonna come out with the federal case.
Right, in the federal case, yeah, to your point, for the federal case, basically, the allegations against, in that case, are that those, the RENA laws, the housing laws altogether are unconstitutional. So if and when we prevail in the federal case, all of this state decision-making and quarters, all this goes away.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a big if.
Thank you for that.
So it's punitive damages?
Councilmember Moser?
Yes, so you talked about the federal case being at the Ninth Circuit, correct? Can you tell us about what happened prior to it getting there?
The suit was filed, the state and SCAG filed a motion to dismiss for lack of standing, and the federal court basically drew the conclusion that the city, the city council, and the individual council members with their federal claims did not have standing. And so that is what's up on appeal in the Ninth Circuit.
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, it's my understanding that we could be in a lifetime of appeals if you can find anything within any decision. I think we'll continue to appeal until, I don't know what happens, so I think that's of note. Another thing that's important is, you said, you quoted high-density units. Is that anywhere actually in the state law, that language?
That there's a density threshold?
No, high-density units, because you always use that language.
Yeah, well, it is considered high-density.
Is that language in the law of the state?
The, in different terms, because it requires a certain level of density, yeah.
Which is 30 units to the acre, right?
Yeah.
Which, under our code, is 35 units to the acre is high-density, it's actually medium-high-density.
So that's my term.
Okay, so it's your term, okay, thank you.
Well, and the community's term.
Which you have defined for them, thank you.
Councilmember Strickland?
I just wanna follow up again on the last comments from the council member, my colleague. This can never be never-ending in terms of federal. My understanding is, once the Supreme Court, if it goes that far, makes their determination, it's done, there's no appeal after that, is that correct?
That's right.
So it wouldn't be never-ending.
It wouldn't be.
Yes, that's what I thought, thank you.
And I'm so glad to hear that the city council is so supportive of our lawsuits. So unless there are any other questions, I will move to the Community Prosecutor Program.
I actually have two or three more questions, real quick.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanna put a fine point, right, because we have a court order that says we're in violation of state law, that says we have 365 days from the issue of the writ to pass a housing element, correct?
That's fair.
So, okay. In fact, we haven't, the judge struck all of the punitive side, we still have the Kennedy Commission as a litigant, right, with the state, they've joined the case?
No, that's, I'm glad you asked that question. They were struck from the order, too.
They were struck from the order, but they're still...
They're still trying to seek, they are still trying to seek action, they were struck from this order, so this order does not involve Kennedy Commission.
Okay, but there's still an intervenor in the case, though?
In the case, but not in the decision. So there's more litigation on that.
Okay. So there's another complication there. Does the court know about our pending charter amendment? Because it seems like we were ordered to pass a housing element, and then we threw this giant roadblock potentially in the way of being able to pass a housing element. So we have 365 days, I'm assuming we're gonna wait till November. Likely the charter amendment passes, if it does, it does, it doesn't, it doesn't. If it does, then we have to go hold a special election sometime in 2025 for a million bucks, maybe, to try to pass, if we pass the housing element, then we have to give it to the voters?
Well, yeah, so courts notoriously don't give any concern to charter amendments precisely because they don't know if they're gonna pass, just like we saw with legal action taken against Measure A, B, and C. It fell flat because courts tend to just allow democracy to play out. So in this case, the court...
They don't know about it, though.
That I don't know, it's made the news.
Okay. I was just concerned that we, you know, we've been ordered to do something, and we're kind of taking two steps back, so that was the only concern, but again...
I don't think they're mutually exclusive, but okay.
Right, okay, but yeah, but the point was that, I mean, we did not prevail at this exercise, and we're kind of back to square one, and I think in some cases, we're back to square negative one. And so that's the concern going forward, is like, are we gonna be able to pass a housing element to meet that? Because if we don't meet the ruling or the order by the end of the year, then other things happen, based on my reading of the writ, right? Like, if you don't do it, then the judge can compel us to do things, and all the penalty things could potentially be reimplemented.
It could, there are a number of bases for the court to extend time in three-month and six-month increments. So theoretically, this judge, especially with this ruling, does not seem unreasonable. If, for whatever reason, and obviously, this is all hypothetical, the city were not able to get it done within the 365 days, but it was gonna require more time, it seems like this judge would extend time pursuant to the code and allow additional time for additional action to be taken.
Remind me, what we have to do is pass a housing element that has been certified by HCD, or just have to pass a housing element?
Pass a housing element that's substantially compliant.
With HCD, and HCD makes that ruling on substantial compliance?
That's what the code says, yeah. I gotta get in on the fun a little bit.
Let's do it. So I think it's pretty obvious to the community that the theme here is that council members Moser, Bolton, and Kalmak want, their default position is to appease the state. They want to accept what the state mandates.
Please don't put words in the mouth.
I'm just saying, I think the theme's clear, in my opinion, it's my opinion. Accept what the state...
Casey, just a second. Can we continue? Thank you.
Accept the state's unfunded mandates without pushing back at all. Yet, this again was another pillar of our contract, that we told the community that we would push back against the state's unfunded mandates because we feel it subverts our local control. And if the state can micromanage how cities are zoned and run, then why have city council members who are closest to the people? So we said we'd fight, they elect us with a historic election landslide mandate, we did, against many criticisms that it would cost us millions of dollars. And as Tony said, we can only deal with where we are now. And where we are now is we bought ourselves more time, roughly two and a half years. At this current moment, we don't have any penalties or fines, we have another year to adopt a housing element. You can't deal in hypotheticals, we'll talk about this later, you can only deal with the facts at the table right now. And right now, we have another year to adopt a housing element and give us potentially more options. That's it, thank you.
You said two and a half, I wanna make sure the record is correct, you said two and a half years? We bought another two and a half years?
I'm just saying, since we've been elected, right? We were supposed to adopt a housing element on the very first meeting, our very first meeting, and since then, to clock it on another year, right? It's actually almost gonna be three years. So all I'm saying is, all I'm saying...
Characterized as putting off the inevitable.
Sure, all I'm saying is, it makes sense to fight, because sometimes if you don't fight, it's over anyway, and you roll over, and our city is unrecognizable. So the voters saw that.
I'm sorry, can only one speak at a time?
Ask a question, I'm giving an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So if you don't fight, it's over anyway. We told the voters we would fight, we'd push back, we believe the law's on our side, the voters agreed with us. And what I'm saying is that when it's said and done, since we were sworn in, it'll probably buy us another three years to try to figure this out, and now have this next 12 months adopting a housing element, simple as that.
Thank you. Councilmember Moser?
Do you think that there are any costs, Councilmember McKean, to pausing or not having a certified housing element at this moment?
Are there any costs? The court just did not put any fines and penalties on us, right? Are you alluding to grants that there, again, we've talked about it up here, there's always strings attached to the grants, and in my opinion, and what I told the voters, is that it's more important to me to fight for our local control about how we zone our city than some bureaucrat that's hundreds of miles away in Sacramento. And for me, that's more important than the strings attached to some grants we can get. I'm highly confident we can find money elsewhere through events, revenue, our streamline HB, that's, you know, increasing our CLO issuance 23% year-over-year. Those are ways to make our local economy strong, I think that outweighs just rolling over and subverting our local control to the state.
I think it's notable that we have lost millions of dollars, actually, in grants for our homelessness services. And the potential challenge of that, especially as we look at looming deficits, as Mr. Inoue talked about earlier, a couple years from now, many millions of dollars of deficits. Every dollar will count, this time will count, this time matters that we're wasting instead of talking about what we can do, instead of looking at all of the hard work that our economic development department did on our housing element. They have things ready to go. If people did come in, we had multiple conversations about that. We can continue to have those, but in the end, there is a cost of sitting around for years in litigation when we should be using that time for other things. And there is a cost, potentially, to the services that we will not be able to provide for our navigation center. And there are 170 or so people who are there that would be out on the streets if we didn't have the funds to be able to support that navigation center. And I hope that we can find the money elsewhere, I hope that you're right, but if we're looking at millions of dollars in deficits, I am waiting to see how that solution looks.
So, real quick on the homelessness, so we just dropped our homelessness numbers by 8%, and we did it for less money spent than when you guys did when we first came in.
That was unsheltered.
Okay.
But that's because of the work...
That number's off the street.
That is because of the work that's been done by our city prior to you also.
Okay.
And thank goodness, you did choose to keep going and working on our navigation center and continuing to support our homeless task force, and I am thrilled with that, because upon entrance into this council, that was my biggest fear, because of the things that I heard directly from some of the council members sitting here. And I am very happy with the fact that you've seen that all of the good and hard work that's been done by this city for almost a decade, actually, is coming to fruition, and we continue to have difficult challenges, but to try to take credit for that in the last two and a half years or two years is ridiculous, and I...
We did it for less money, and your homeless czar who was making over $300,000, Jason Austin, quit the day after I came up here and asked him a bunch of questions. So we had better results, net less people off the street, 55 in the permanent housing, amazing numbers, and we did it for less money.
So, let me just say something really quick. Okay, so when you ask, have we lost any money, you're referring to the grants. We didn't receive certain grants because we decided to fight for the community. So what I'm saying, what I'm hearing from all of you guys is, we didn't get the money because we didn't bow down to this ridiculous RENA numbers from Sacramento. So this is a perfect example of some of the abuse of power that's coming down from there. They say, if you don't do what we say, you're not going to get this money. So what we had to do is to find different options so that we can, so that we can reduce the number of the homelessness, and we found different ways, different solutions. We have a wonderful homeless task force who's done a wonderful job. We have moved forward even without those funds, those grants. We got it done without selling out our city. Councilmember Strickland?
And if I would add, that homeless czar was gonna make more than our city manager, and my two cents are... And my two cents are, is a homeless czar that makes more than a city manager going to really want to solve the homeless problem in Huntington Beach? No, the answer is no. Of course it's not. And we talk about costs. What is the cost to the city of Huntington Beach if we went along with the state and urbanized the city? It would be devastating for the city. And we've heard that from countless citizens across this city. And then, you know, I just find it interesting that one of my colleagues said, well, it's inevitable that you're going to lose this case. Well, they said that when they voted 4-3 against the case that we just won, that's number 12 on our item. It was 4-3, correct? It was inevitable that we're going to lose that case, but we won the Supreme Court case. So again, no one knows what the courts are going to do. But to say it's inevitable is just mistaken.
If I may correct the record, nobody said that it was inevitable that we were going to lose the Grants Pass case. No, I didn't say that. So don't put words in my mouth because I didn't say that. And let me also add that we accept some grants and don't accept others from the state and from the federal government. And so don't give me that line about, well, we're not going to bow down to the state because we accept some grants and don't accept others. It's just that when it has to do with housing and homelessness, we want to talk about the grants as if they're a really bad thing. But hey, are we just going to stop accepting grants?
Let's be clear. I believe that we should try to go get grants. I do believe that we should go get federal money and state money where we can. I'm going to work on trying to do that. We also have to understand that it is the people's money. We got to try to get some of our tax dollars back here to Huntington Beach. But the point is, the point is, we're not just going to go along with whatever Sacramento says in order to get that money.
One more note, just with regards to our homeless czar, who did an incredible job while he was here. He did an incredible job while he was here.
In your opinion.
I'm not done. Thank you, sir.
In your opinion.
You actually get to see many of the things that he proposed happening. Many of the-
Unfortunately.
Sir.
Pat, Pat. Wait. Go ahead.
Misrepresenting stuff.
I'm not misrepresenting anything.
In an opinion.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Moser.
I think what's important to note is that when he left, he chose to leave. A lot of people have chosen to leave over the last two years. Every executive, department head, minus maybe one, has chosen to leave. So to say that he left after you asked him a lot of questions, sir, is ridiculous. I think perhaps he left for better opportunities than to deal with the chaos that has been created here.
I'm just saying, I had a bunch of questions to ask him that night. He was sick and wasn't at the meeting. And then the very next day, he resigned. So I think the timing's a little coincidence.
One thing, we can what-if this all night long and we can make all kinds of deals. We're dealing with what's right now. The one thing that I will make certain, and I'll say it right here, is that I'm against all the mandates, not just the RINA numbers. Those mandates, affordable housing or the housing shortage, I believe, is a Newsom-created and a progressive agenda-created deal. That's why they're opening the borders. If we had such a housing shortage, what are we doing letting a bunch of illegal immigrants into the country? So I'm not buying all that. And the mandates, nobody should tell us as a city, as a governing agency, how we should zone, how we should build in our city, except for us, from this bench right here. I don't agree with it and I hope we fight it to the nth degree because I don't like it at all.
Did you have anything? Okay. Would you like? Okay. Chief?
Yes.
She going to continue to yell out like that the whole night?
No, I'll leave out the statement that Tony lives in an affordable housing. Leave now! You're a disgrace to my city. You're a disgrace. You're a disgrace. Most of you aren't even from here. Listen, Harvard, baby. You're a Harvard student. Forty-five years, you're a sister.
I'm waiting for her to walk out. Oh, he's got one more item. Okay. Go ahead with your fourth case.
Community prosecutor program. Thank you, Mayor. So I do have a PowerPoint with some slides for you on this topic tonight. Hopefully my, I don't know if it's going to work. Travis, I don't think it's working. Am I up now? Or that was John? Yeah, you can do it from there. Okay. Thank you. Just a super brief history. In 2016, my office sought to offer our police department some more support in battling crime, particularly in the downtown areas. And that was during the time that we were seeing the effects of Props 47, 57, and AB 109, which reduced punishments and accountability for many crimes. So the idea was to approach the district attorney's office. I think you can flip to the next slide. Approach the district attorney's office and ask basically for consent and support so that we may have our own local ability in the city attorney's office to prosecute state misdemeanors and also the municipal code violations. It's always been in the city's charter, Section 309B, to prosecute crimes, both state and local crimes. But it was really never put into effect. So while that provision has been in different versions of the city charter going back, that predates the 1950s, we've never really engaged in prosecuting state crimes. So this endeavor, and if you switch to the next slide, this endeavor in 2016 was pretty new. Of the 34 cities in the state of California, Huntington Beach became the second city in the entire county of 34 cities to actually prosecute state crimes at the local level in the city attorney's office. So the city of Anaheim, I think, has been doing it since the 1950s or before. But no other city in the county has. So Huntington Beach, with the consent and support of Tony Recocca at the time, embarked on a new journey, started a prosecutor program in the city attorney's office. And with the city council's support then and the funding, we started the program. So next slide. The mission of the city community prosecutor program is to enhance the quality of life for all people within the city of Huntington Beach by vigorously and conscientiously prosecuting local crime to promote public peace and safety and protect businesses and property owners. Next slide. So the program goals are to work cooperatively with the district attorney's office to prosecute crimes impacting residents' quality of life. And if the public is not fully aware, there are a whole host of crimes that the DA prosecutes for the city of Huntington Beach. We hold back some of those crimes. We don't prosecute all crimes. We focus on the ones that impact the quality of life, the things that people see in the community as they're living life, everyday life. And we'll get into some of those examples in later slides. But the focus is really in the downtown area. That's where a lot of the activity is, both with our nightlife in the downtown area, but also with tourism in the downtown area. So there's a concerted effort by the prosecutor's office, you know, focusing on the arrests that our police officers make in the downtown area to improve the quality of life, not only for the residents in the downtown area, but also for our businesses. And we seek convictions, but we also seek probations. Critically, what's been very effective is stayaway orders. That was something back in 2016 and 17 when we started talking about how we could best implement better support for law enforcement. Most people were saying, there's no way you're going to get stayaway orders. Well, we have a pretty good record of getting a lot of stayaway orders. And basically what that is, is a defendant will stipulate to stay away from the downtown area or a certain park or whatever location throughout the city that may be a magnet for their criminal activity. Let's just put it that way. So, and we've gotten actually court-imposed stayaway orders as well with repeat offenders. So incredibly effective tool in the tool belt to fight crime and to essentially have people who, again, were repeat offenders in certain areas of the city, be removed by the stayaway order. We also have other programs, diversionary programs and things like that for, you know, one-time or two-time offenders that really seek to make their life better. They show some sort of remorse and they talk to the judge about, you know, wanting to clean up their life or whatever. And so we're there and able to offer them community service, whether it's cleaning up trash in the wetlands or things like that. So we have them focus on community cleanups in Huntington Beach. And they work with some of our local partners to effectuate that as well. So next slide. I think that slide speaks for itself. That's a quote from our chief, Eric Parra. I guess for the folks at home who might find it hard to read, I'll just read it. The city attorney's office prosecutor program empowers our officers to address quality of life issues that directly impact our community. With dedicated local prosecutors assigned to each case, carefully examining the merits of each unique situation, they can determine the best course of action to reduce repeat offenses while holding individuals accountable for their actions. The support of this program is crucial in maintaining high quality of life we expect in our community. So thank you for that, Chief. And will both be available for questions by council at the end of this presentation. So next slide. We now have two prosecutors. Steven, or Mr. Pomeroy, has been on board since 2021 and has done a great job prosecuting cases, has a good working relationship with the police department. And the way it works as a police department, they make the arrests, they complete the reporting, they gather whatever evidence, and then they refer the case for prosecution either to the city attorney's office or to the DA's office. And so Steven and the police department have had a great relationship with that case referral and getting good results. Paige started in October, or Ms. Cavendish started in October of 2023 as a result of this council's decision to expand the program by providing some additional funding. So thank you for that. Because we now have two prosecutors working full-time on these cases, our rolling average of cases is over 2,000 cases. So at any given time, we have over 2,000, we're handling over 2,000 criminal cases in-house. Next slide. This is just an example of some of the things that we see commonly referred to the city prosecutor's office or the community prosecutor's office. And these are the quality of life crimes that I mentioned earlier. And that's just a list of them. Next slide. Just to give you an idea of what some of these are, Penal Code 484, thefts under $950 at local stores, including Jack Surfboards, Surf and Sport, Costco, and so on. Those are the types of things that we're able to prosecute in-house under 484. I've given you a couple of examples of, I think, positive outcomes from the prosecution. This is a 484 case. On December 30th, 2023, defendant stole a little over $100 worth of items from Nordstrom Rack. On March 18th, 2024, that defendant pled guilty and was sentenced to 90 days in jail, one-year probation, subject to search by police, ordered to pay restitution, and to stay away from the store. He had multiple prior theft convictions. Next. Another 484. March 10th, 2024, defendant stole a little less than $100 worth of items from Walmart. That defendant pled guilty, sentenced to one-year probation, subject to search by police, ordered to complete eight hours of volunteer community service, pay restitution, and after the one year, the theft charge was dismissed.
America.
Thank you. Penal Code 148, resisting police officers or resisting arrest. That's, we see that commonly. Just an example of that, February 14th, 2024, defendant refused to comply with the officer commands to stop illegally loitering and sleeping in the downtown parking structure and physically resisted being taken into custody on July 10th of that year. That defendant pled guilty, sentenced to one-year probation, subject to search by police, ordered to stay away from the downtown parking structure. And that defendant did have a little bit of a criminal history.
Mr. Attorney, was that from the new ordinance we passed, right, Chief? Sorry, I didn't-
That was one of the new ordinances that we passed, I think, last year.
That's correct.
Yeah, awesome. And some of these, I'm highlighting the state penal code charges. Oftentimes, there's also municipal code charges brought as well. On another 148, December 9th, 2023, defendant kicked and fought with officers, trying to cite her for drinking in public in the downtown area. March 18th, 2024, that defendant pled guilty, sentenced to 30 days in jail. Defendant had a history of misdemeanor assaults and batteries. Penal Code 602, trespassing, entering and remaining on property not open to the general public. In this example, January 17th, 2024, defendant continued to return unwelcome to the Shorebreak Hotel. On June 10th of the same year, defendant pled guilty, sentenced to 90 days in jail, ordered to stay away from the hotel as a condition of probation. In felony case prosecuted by the DA's office, defendant had a long criminal history. Illegal lodging under State Penal Code 647E. On December 22nd, 2022, defendant was temporarily staying and sleeping on a private shopping center at Warner Avenue and PCH. On May 20th, 2024, defendant pled guilty, sentenced to one-year probation, 30 days of jail, stayed if defendant entered the navigation center and took steps to obtain permanent housing. Minor criminal history, resistant to homeless services. This is just a list of some of the municipal codes that we see coming to our office from referrals from PD. The diversion program, really important. Homeless defendants may have their cases dismissed if they engage with services, including attending Huntington Beach Social Worker Office hours, entering into the Huntington Beach Navigation Center or another shelter, engaging in drug, alcohol, and mental health treatment, enrolling in homeless outreach court, Orange County Collaborative Court, where comprehensive services are made, potential criminal penalties, incentivize service-resistant individuals to accept assistance. Community prosecutors have a tremendous success in holding repeat offenders accountable. Next slide. For example, Huntington Beach Police arrested defendant on 32 outstanding warrants for crimes of disorderly conduct. City's community prosecutors obtained a sentence of 90 days jail, one-year probation, and an order that defendant stay 100 yards away from the Pier, Pier Plaza, and downtown parking structure at 200 Main Street. Most importantly, this defendant has not been arrested again since serving his sentence. And these are just some statistics. Total crime cases filed, over 1,100 in the last year, 290 convictions, nearly a 200% increase over the year before. And then you can see sort of the data there. 36 diversion resolutions. Diversion terms may include attendance of AA, rehab programs, community service work, addressing theft, anger management, life skills. And we currently have 858 pending cases open. And that is our presentation, our annual report, and available for any questions.
I just want to make a comment. We were sworn in. We asked the police what tools they need to really, you know, help crack down on crime. Obviously, those ordinances that we passed. But one big thing they all said was how effective the prosecutor program was. We only had one prosecutor, so I'm glad we were able to get that new one in 2023. And you can see the amazing results it's had. So I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the police making this happen, obviously the attorney's office. So let's just keep it going because it's obviously yielding tremendous results.
Yeah, and I will say too that starting a fledgling program like this does take a little bit of time. And it really is with the support of our police department. The court system, believe it or not, they have folks in the courts that are able to provide information and support on how to put together an effective program. And then the DA's office. So our prosecutors work and have worked consistently over the years in conjunction with other agencies to make our program effective. So.
Do any council members have questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to consent calendar, does any council member have any item they'd like to pull?
18, please.
19 for a quick comment and a question.
29 for a quick as well.
29? 29? That's not on consent. So, we're good? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to move the remaining items.
Second.
We're going to take a vote on consent items 14 through 17 and 20 through 28. Councilmember Mosher.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Calmick.
Aye.
Thank you. They passed 7-0.
Thank you. Councilmember Calmick, number 18.
Thank you. I appreciate the IRC bringing forward number A. I think having portions of the 405 named after Surf City is great marketing for the city, and that's great. The second item is the one that concerns me from a process issue. For the last 50 years, nearly the last 50 years, the city council of the city of Huntington Beach does not take positions on statewide ballot measures. While I support Prop 36 personally, the reasoning for this resolution was to keep politics local here, on local issues that are of concern to Huntington Beach. Now, I understand Prop 36 macro level has impacts on Huntington Beach, but to throw out norms and to throw out nearly 50 years of precedent with regard to not taking positions on statewide initiatives, and again, this is a massively popular statewide position, so to throw out a norm to kind of pile on isn't a great process in my mind. So, while I do support Prop 36, I think, you know, gives us some, gives the state more tools in order to fight the crime that is seen, you know, according to the state auditor, seen some increase because of it that allows the state to and police to be able to effectuate apprehension of people that are serial criminals, the fentanyl rules, and it also allows... Oh, never far enough away. That...
One is coming.
Earthquake notifications make you lose your train of thought. So, yeah, effectively, you know, the state legislature can always fine tune after, if Prop 36 passes, after the fact. So, I will be not, I don't know how we're going to take this, but, you know, I support A, but we will be abstaining or voting no on B primarily because of the process that I'm not willing to throw out 50 years of norms for the sake of a pile on for a statewide proposition.
I move the item as is.
A second.
I just have an additional comment, if I may. So, I share councilmember Calmick's concern about tossing out the resolution that the council has followed for several decades, as he mentioned. I think another important aspect of it is that if we are using city resources to take positions on state ballots, I feel like that kind of puts the staff in the position of working on political matters, and we all know that the staff is not here to work on political matters or here to work on city policy and things for the residents of the city. So, I do share the concern about tossing out the resolution that says that we will not take positions on statewide ballot measures. Understand the importance of Prop 36. I will support the item and setting aside the resolution this time, but I don't anticipate agreeing to do so in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Strickland.
I would just say this is not a political matter. This is a matter of policy that's before the voters, that's absolutely impactful to Huntington Beach, and not just Huntington Beach, the state of California. This is, you know, one of the things when you talk to a lot of the merchants and law enforcement, it's been, you know, the previous initiative's been devastating, and this is a policy of supporting our law enforcement and hopefully, you know, this reform that's going to be before the voters is dramatic policy for the state of California and for the citizens of Huntington Beach. So, this is not a political matter. This is a matter of policy, and it's a policy that we should support.
Go ahead.
I personally, not as a councilperson here on the dais, but I personally do support this proposition. I think that we have seen serial crime be a huge issue within our stores. I was just at Whole Foods the other day, and one of the gentlemen was talking about how people come in with multiple carts and just walk out. I think the cumulative nature with which this addresses theft is important. I also personally lost a friend due to fentanyl, and I think it's a huge problem, and I think it's important to be mitigated through this proposition personally. However, I also think that there is something to be said for norms and processes and procedures. And again, this is one that we do not take positions on statewide ballot measures, and I think that it's important that we continue to follow our norms regardless of what I think personally. I think it's important that we do not set aside the resolution. We can state what we think each individually, but I think as a council and as staff, moving that forward is inappropriate. So, for me, I will be abstaining from this because of the process piece, but personally, I support the proposition, but do not think that the council, based upon our rules, should be taking this vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Strickland.
I want to ask the city attorney something really quick. When they say "our rules," my understanding is a majority vote of the city council, unless it's in our charter, it's not, it's just a, it's a practice, right? It's not our rules that we're breaking.
So, a resolution is just a majority of the council on a policy issue, and if the, it's not a law, so if the council wants to set aside a resolution?
So, we're not breaking any rules. Let's make that clear.
Right. You can set aside a resolution. It does happen often, often that you set aside a resolution. It's not gone common.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
It didn't happen often until this council came in, to be honest.
Well, I've been, I've been up here for 10 years, and I can tell you it's happened quite a bit.
Okay. Not prior, but.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Do you want to take just A and B separately? Would that work better?
I think, I moved, I moved the item as is.
I know you moved both.
I would like to vote as is on the item.
All right. Yeah, I wasn't proposing to change it, but I'm just going to say, according to what I see, you have a 7-0 vote on A, and then on B, you have...
Again, it was moved as a whole item, so that we're not separating A and B. It's been moved as a whole item.
All right. Councilmember Mosher.
As councilmember Peterson used to do, I am yes on A and abstain on B. Thank you.
All right. Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Calmick.
Aye on A and abstain on B.
Again, to the clerk, this is the city council, and I would direct it to the mayor. I move the item as is, A and B, and you cannot bifurcate if that's the way it's been moved by the council.
City attorney?
I would address it to the city attorney.
That's the way it's always been done. If it's, the way it's moved is the way it's voted on.
Yep.
So, if they try to split it?
That's not my understanding, but...
That's Robert, that's, you know.
Then I'll change my, not Robert's rules. Find and quote the section for me if it's Robert's rules. Then I'll change my vote to abstain.
Same. All right. So, the item passes 502 with Mosher and Calmick abstaining.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Proton Burns, item 19.
Yeah, this, this is about Chris Carr Park, the improvements made to it, and I just want to, Chris Carr was a Medal of Honor winner in World War II. He, the story, I believe, if it hasn't, if you're not familiar with it, I'm going to give a quick reading of it. It's worthy of it, and then I have a request along with it. Leading his company in Italy in October 1st, 1944, he gallantly cleared the way for his company to approach along a ridge towards its objective in Italy. When his platoon was pinned down by heavy fire from enemy mortars, machine guns, machine pistols, and rifles, he climbed in advance of his, he was forward in advance of his squad on a maneuver around the left flank to locate and eliminate enemy gun positions. Undeterred by deadly fire that ricocheted off the barren rocky hillside, he crept to the rear of the first machine gun and charged, firing his submachine gun. In his surprise attack, he captured eight prisoners and turned them over to his squad before striking out alone on a second machine gun. I want to note, taking the prisoners is amazing to me in that situation. Discovered in his advance and subject to direct fire from the hostile weapon, he leaped to his feet and ran forward, weaving and crouching, pouring automatic fire into the emplacement that killed four of its defenders and forced, again, the surrender of a lone survivor. He again moved forward through a heavy fire to attack a third machine gun. When close to the emplacement, he closed with a nerve-shattering shout and a burst of fire. Paralyzed by his whirlwind attack, all four gunners immediately surrendered, once more advancing aggressively in the face of a thoroughly alerted enemy. He approached a point of high ground occupied by two machine guns, which were firing on his company on the slope below. Charging the first of these weapons, he killed four of the crew and captured three more. The six defenders of the adjacent position cowed by the savagery of his assault immediately gave up. By his one-man attack, heroically and voluntarily undertaken in the face of tremendous risks, he changed his name. He was Cabarrus at the time. He changed it to Chris Carr later, but he captured five enemy machine gun positions, killed eight Germans, and took 22 prisoners in a battle like that. Cleared the ridge leading to his company's objective and dove a deep wedge into the enemy line, making it possible for his battalion to occupy the important commanding ground. And that's why we have a park named for him at Springdale and Hile.
That fired me up, Pat. I'm not going to lie.
Huh?
That fired me up right now.
It's, I, it's, I'll tell you.
Dude, it's Captain America.
Barely matched in any of the stories I've read, and I've read quite a few on battles and deeds of valor. And the only thing I'd request in this park's improvement, there's a plaque in his honor right at the corner of Springdale and Hile is, and it's been requested by a couple people from our, amazingly, before it was even, just last week it was requested, before they even knew about any improvements being proposed, but if we could put a flagpole in his honor on the corner near his plaque at Hile and Springdale.
Pat, is that a, could we, would that plaque tell that story that you just read?
I am not sure what, to be honest with you, I can't read the plaque. It's kind of grown over and weathered, and I'm not sure if we can put, like, figure out something, because that's, I'm telling you, that's incredible.
Yeah, can we, actually, can we, on the plaque and besides the flagpole, can we also write out that, memorialize that entire story that Pat just read?
As part of the project, we can bring back a plaque for council approval.
Sweet, thank you.
And work in a flagpole at that location. It'd be greatly appreciated.
Second that.
Okay, so, we'd like to move it as amended.
That's it? Okay. Councilmember Mosher.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Calmick.
Aye.
Item is amended, passes 7.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the public hearing for item number 29. Adopt a resolution authorizing application for funds under the Orange County Transportation Authority for an Orange County Enhanced Mobility for Seniors and Disabled Grant Program. Staff, please introduce your report.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and city council members. This evening, we have for you the Orange County Enhanced Mobility for Seniors and Disabled Grant Program. There's a need to adopt Resolution 2024-37 authorizing staff to apply to the Orange County Transportation Authority for an Orange County Enhanced Mobility for Seniors and Disabled, which, moving forward, I'll be calling it the EMSD Grant, to purchase the TripSparks notification software for our Surf City Seniors On-the-Go Transportation Program. To the city, there is no general fund impact. The total grant program request is $56,168. OCTA's contribution, if awarded, would be $51,000, and there's a 10% match requirement of just over $5,000. And if awarded, the Huntington Beach Council on Aging has already confirmed that they will provide the match. The EMSD Grant Program is administered through OCTA, and this program is intended to support the needs of seniors beyond traditional public transportation and for individuals with disabilities beyond that required by the ADA Act. Funding from the grant would be used to support the Surf City Seniors On-the-Go Senior Transportation Program. This is a donation-based program, providing curb-to-curb transportation for our Huntington Beach seniors age 60 and over, and this transportation provides transportation from their homes to medical appointments, shopping centers, social services, and to our wonderful senior center in Central Park. The TripSparks Rider Notification Software is a demand-response application that gives our passengers up-to-the-minute notifications, which enhances their user experience. So, they can receive communication via a phone call, text message, or email in real time. In our fiscal year 2324, Surf City Seniors On-the-Go provided 17,000 free trips to 480 unduplicated passengers. So, this is a beloved program in our community. As part of the grant application, OCTA requires the city to publicly notice the intent to apply for the grant, directly notify private nonprofit transportation providers via registered email or registered mail, conduct a public hearing, and adopt a resolution. So, this evening, the recommended action is to adopt Resolution Number 2024-37, a resolution of the city council of the city of Huntington Beach authorizing city staff to apply to the Orange County Transportation Authority for an Orange County Enhanced Mobility for Seniors and Disabled Grant Program to purchase the TripSparks Notification Software for the Surf City Seniors On-the-Go Senior Transportation Program. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council members, do you have any questions?
Just a note.
Yes, now.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, council member. Mayor Proton. I, I just wanted to say thank you to the HBCOA for providing this matching grant. Ron and I are liaisons for the HBCOA and got to see the presentation on this there as well, and I think that the number of people that it's going to assist, you know, a lot of the people that are served by this, you know, many of them have disabilities, mobility issues, and so it's nice not to be having to wait outside for their ride. They can get that updated information. And for HBCOA to provide those matching funds is just very appreciated. I appreciate all that they do for their fundraising and all of their volunteer efforts as well. And I'd like to move the item. Actually, we have a public hearing.
Yes. I'd now like to open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
No one signed up and no supplemental communication.
Okay, so, we're closing the public hearing. I'd like to, I poll a motion, oh, you made a motion.
I'll second it.
And Tony second it.
All right, let's vote. Councilmember Mosher.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
Strickland.
Aye.
McKeon.
Yes.
Calmick. Passes 7-0.
Thank you. So, now, moving on to council member items. Item number 30, which is my item. So, tonight, I'm bringing forward an item to address a grave injustice perpetrated against the parents and children by the state of California. Governor Gavin Newsom has signed Assembly Bill 1955 into law, a piece of legislation that aims to prohibit schools from mandating that teachers inform parents about their child's use of gender nonconforming pronouns or name changes without the child's consent. This bill is a direct violation of our constitutional rights to raise our own children. It is deeply disturbing that the state of California believes that strangers are better suited to make life-changing decisions for our children than we, as the parents are. Although not perfect, there are already safeguards in place to address issues like child abuse, but that is not what this law is about. I have been in this battle to protect parental rights for over nine years. I have personally witnessed the state of California chipping away at our constitutional rights to raise our children without undue interference by the state, using our legal system as our weapon of choice against us, the parents. On January 15, 2020, during one of the many advocacy trips I took to Sacramento, this one in support of SB 673, Senator Morell expressed his frustration at Sacramento's overreach. Would you please play the video? Would you please play the video?
Thank you for your testimony. At the appropriate time, I want to move the bill. Having said that, I see a lot of new faces here today. I'm glad you're here. You need to stay engaged. If you're not sure what's going on in this building, we're having our own private version of Animal Farm. Policymakers in this building want to raise your children, whether it comes to school choice, comes to having input on curriculum. We want to put government bureaucrats in between doctors and parents and children. All these things are going on, and so I'm glad that you're here today, but you have to stay engaged, or you're going to lose control of the ability to raise your own children.
Can I just add something quickly to?
No, you may not.
Okay.
So as you can see, this has been going on for a very, very long time. As a matter of fact, the only reason I'm the mayor of the city of Huntington Beach is because I was disgusted by what the state of California was doing to our children. And that's the only reason I'm sitting here today. I have been in here for so long that instead of slowing down, I've just seen this progress and get worse and worse. And it's gotten so bad that people are just accepting this. Due to this egregious abuse of power by the state, California has become one of the most dangerous states to raise children. I personally know dozens of families who have fled California to protect their children from the highness state overreach. These families have made the heartbreaking decisions to leave behind their homes, their communities, and their livelihoods because they felt the state had overstepped its bounds, infringing on their fundamental rights as parents, essentially putting their children in danger. I remember when it was considered predatory to have a child keep secrets from their parents. As far as I'm concerned, nothing has changed, and encouraging a child to keep secrets from their parents is still a predatory act today. The signing of AB 1955 represents a significant step towards creating another barrier between parents and their children, demonstrating that the state's commitment to the systematic erosion of our constitutional parental rights. This bill not only negatively impacts parents and children, but it also places educators in an uncomfortable position. Many educators share this concern of parents regarding their legislation, yet they fear retaliation if they voice their objections. This creates a challenging environment for those dedicated to the welfare of their students but are hesitant to speak out. The state started the slippery slope years ago. Its infringement to raise our children has metastasized to the point where wonderful parents are being labeled villains, as the government portrays itself as the true and best authority to raise our children. Think about the implications. This time, it's AB 1955, which focuses on gender and gender identity issues, but what comes next? Should schools keep parents in the dark if students are caught vaping, fighting, ditching, pregnant? Where do we draw the line? How much information regarding our children should schools keep a secret from parents? And who gets to decide what information is shared? These are not hypothetical questions. They are fundamental to the trust and partnership that should exist between the state and families. We must ask ourselves these crucial questions and demand answers that honor us, the parents. The governor most recently, most recent attack on our children and our parents is not only an attack on Huntington Beach families, but it's also an economic disaster for California, with the departure of many businesses, such as SpaceX, which generates over $8.5 billion and employs over 13,000 California residents, many of whom will be left unemployed, not to mention the economic benefit of SpaceX affords surrounding businesses. And I did hear somebody say, who cares about SpaceX? You know who cares? All the employees. You know who cares? All of the surrounding businesses that relied on the business from the employees to come down to their businesses, mom and pop shops. They're the ones that care. You know who cares? California residents who were benefiting from the tax revenue. We must unite to protect our children against any and all threats to our family unit, including an overreaching government. Our children are ours to raise with our family values and ethics, not the government's. Our state has been systematically destroying what was once known as the golden state, and now the very legislators running our state to the ground expect us to untrust them to raise our children under California's dictates. Given the current state of affairs, our families should not trust the government. Families are the cornerstone of our children's upbringing, not the state. It is imperative that we unite in this cause, stand firm in our convictions, and reclaim our parental rights. We need to send a clear message that parents will not be sidelined in critical decisions affecting our children's welfare. We are the first and foremost protectors, and we must ensure that our voices are heard and respected. This is not just another bill. It's about the future of our parental rights and the well-being of our children. Together, we need to take a stand to protect our families and ensure that our voices are never silenced and our constitutional rights to raise our children are not stolen. And on another note, with all that being said, one thing that the governor has been neglecting for a very, very long time are minorities. Somebody came up and spoke and said, well, stop going to get Botox. Get off social media. That's why you don't know what's going on with your children. But in communities like the ones I grew up in, we didn't have the money for Botox. A lot of us don't have the time to be on social media because we're so busy trying to raise money to feed our children. That was extremely insensitive to generalize all parents as going to Botox. So what I am recommending is that we direct our city manager to work with our city attorneys to prepare ordinances for introduction at the September 3rd council meeting, declaring that the city of Huntington Beach is a parent's right to no city. This ordinance should stipulate that no educator stands in the way of informing parents of their child's gender or gender expression. Furthermore, we must declare that our city's interested in challenging the state's AB 1955 or joining a parent's challenge to this overreaching legislation. And this is not only about gender and gender identity. I want to know what is wrong with my child, whether it's mental issues, health issues, they have issues concentrating, bullying issues. We have a right to know everything that's going on with our children. So that is why I'm bringing this motion.
I'll second that. I got a comment when you're ready.
Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't believe, I'm not a big fan of Newsom. I don't think his intentions are virtuous at all. This has nothing to do with protecting the children. I think it's another abuse of the LGBTQ community. Find a subject and rage them so they just make a statement, and another attack on the family unit. It's just another effort to split the family and indoctrinate a generation of followers. Newsom wants to try to take over people's lives as if he can run their lives better than they can for themselves. He can't even manage the state. Look what the hell he's done to our state. He hasn't even done that yet. He wants to take over our lives. And I'll say it again, this tyrant is out of control, as outlined in the ordinance request. He ignores U.S. Supreme Court decisions to inflect his poisonous desires onto parents and now teachers. Teachers should be allowed to teach, not be forced to hide secrets from parents or be played as enforcers of a tyrant's idiotic schemes. One of our council members said that this is a weird and ridiculous agenda item. This is a school issue and creates another circus in Huntington Beach. This comes from the leader of the clowns of the left circus and a big supporter of the circus ringleader on the left, Newsom. AB 1955 attacks our teachers and parents and drives a huge wedge between parents and children that would be a situation when a child needs their parents most. If a kid's fighting those situations where they do have any kinds of secrets from their parents, they should be encouraged to tell their parents and help work it out, not kept secret. AB 1955 attacks our, I already said, I would be, I would ask this council member to please put HB and its families first for once and not put Newsom's society-destructive desires before HB's best interests. AB 1955 forces a dangerous responsibility onto educators of which their training as educators doesn't include how to keep secrets from parents and doing reckless deeds of the governor. Is AB 1955 an example of the training on how to ruin America Newsom is getting from his mentor during his regular visits to China? Open your borders and have them depend then on the state, raise taxes, drive businesses out of the state, place unreasonable costs and regulations on taxpayers, and tear apart the family unit. That's all the things I've seen this guy do. This is not, there is nothing good about the executive order, or this law, AB 1955, except it doesn't expose our governor's desire for absolute rule over cities, communities, our children, and people of our state. I'll be supporting this ordinance, people's right to know, I mean, parents' right to know ordinance, and we must continue trying to do what's best for HB. His, this is another example, sort of, to the housing mandates or affordable housing. And like I always say, do you hear of any houses not selling in Huntington Beach? There are affordable housing to those who work hard, and it's a goal. People work to be here. And it's him trying to take over all these different factions of our quality of life and is, just got to stop. He's got to stop, and we got to make a stand wherever we can. And that's it.
Any other council members have any comments? Councilmember Kalmick.
Thank you. That was wild. All right, so I don't know if I'm reading the right bill here. I think, I like to think that, I'm pretty decent at using a computer, so. The opening line here says that, of the item, last month, Governor Newsom signed into law AB 1955, which prevents educators from informing parents of their children's, of their child's gender identity or gender expression. I read the law multiple times.
Without the consent of the child.
It doesn't say that.
Okay.
It doesn't say that. So I read the bill, I read the analysis of the bill, read some articles on the bill, and it doesn't appear that it does any of that. It just stops the school districts, chartered schools, special districts, from creating policies that prohibit educators from doing that. Educators still have discretion, they still have autonomy, they still have agency to do what they think is right or wrong, but it stops the school district from doing that. So when we say that it pits children against their parents, this bill maintains status quo. It stops school districts from changing what has been the state law for everything for 100 years, 150 years. So I don't understand how this is changing anything other than what's been going on in schools for 150 years, because it only just stops districts from changing what's status quo. So that was unclear again as to how this changed anything, based on my reading of the law, based on the analysis of the bills by legislative staff, based on my reading of it. The second thing we get to is all technical now. How's an ordinance work, right? So we're a city. The bill flat-out says it multiple times and calls out the organization that this bill applies to, which is an employee or contractor of a school district, which we're not, a county office of education, which we're not, a charter school, which we're not, a state special school for the blind and the deaf, which we're not, or a member of a governing body of a school district, which we're not, or a county office of education, which I'm not, or a member of the governing body of a charter school, which I'm not, shall not in any manner retaliate or take advantage. That opening stands as referenced multiple times in this bill. None of this is anything to do with us. We had folks come here and say, you know, you're in the schools, you're in the schools. We have zero jurisdiction. I'll ask Travis upfront. How many schools do we manage in the city of Huntington Beach as the corporate body of the city of Huntington Beach? We don't have any schools. How many educators that are credentialed teachers do we operate as a city on our payroll? We don't have any. So I have trouble understanding how this is relevant to anything that this body does, forgetting the issues at hand and what the item actually wants to do. I have trouble in understanding how, A, we're going to find standing and/or try to sue the state when I don't see how we are harmed by this bill as a corporate body. Now personally, other folks, other organizations may find what is, what this bill is effectively maintaining status quo is objectionable, but as this corporate body, I do not see how this applies to us. I also don't understand, and the action item is to pass an ordinance, again, an ordinance, this seems, I don't know where in our municipal code we have a value statement section where you have a law that says we have a value statement that we are a parent's right to no city. I don't know that any other place in our municipal code that that exists. This seems like it would be a resolution, but I'm guessing it wants to be an ordinance so we can talk about it at two more meetings for political reasons. But this is a value statement that would seemingly go like the other value statements that this council majority has passed, which are resolutions stating a policy goal. An ordinance that says no educator stands in the way of informing parents of their child's gender identity or gender expression begs the question is, who is the educator standing in the way of? Because the way this is written, it says that the educator standing between somebody else and the parent, is it the child? Is the educator standing? Because again, I don't quite understand how we're going to write a law that says that. Again, this is taxpayer dollars. We're spending time here, we got a bunch of folks on the payroll here about an issue that's not in the purview of this city. Why would we join a school district outside the city of Huntington Beach in a potential lawsuit? I know, I think Chino Valley is suing the state on this. I haven't received a single email on this from anybody. I don't think the council has on this prior to this item being brought forward. And so I still, yeah, the ordinance piece of this is weird. Are we, because a violation of the municipal code is a misdemeanor, as far as I understand it. So how are we going to enforce a misdemeanor against an educator? So, and this starts to get to like, you start hitting all four corners of the box on this ordinance. The city of Huntington Beach has multiple school districts that interact with it. So Schroder Elementary School is in the Westminster School District, is in the city. So if we are going to state, and I'm assuming massaging this into forcing teachers at Schroder, which is in the city of Huntington Beach but in the Westminster School District, have a different policy than the rest of the Westminster School District, I feel like Westminster School District's going to have something to say about that. Same thing with Ocean View School District. Westmont is in the city of Westminster, but in the Ocean View School District. Fountain Valley has a, Talbert Middle School is in Huntington Beach but part of the Fountain Valley School District, different special districts. So I'm a little concerned about potential exposure from them, from some child who's at Schroder being treated differently than the rest of the kids in the Westminster School District. And I can't really think of any other municipal code that would apply in such a way that is different from other cities that would be directly inherent at the schools. So again, just on the technicality of this, I don't understand how this is going to actually work. And I am, again, worried of legal exposure. If we were to implement an ordinance like this, that the state Board of Education may step in, which would therefore be the Attorney General, and I think if we get three lawsuits by the Attorney General, we all get three sandwiches? I don't, I don't know. But I would not like to punch that active member card. I also have some concerns about the rhetoric that obviously has been used throughout this. You know, we all know that the LGBTQ community, and this is obviously focusing on trans kids' rights, that, you know, members of, on this dais, posting anti-trans memes, putting out Russian propaganda about Algerian boxers. And, you know, this all just gets kind of confusing as to, again, our lane that we're supposed to be staying in as a city, how this actually helps us, and how we find standing. And why would we be spending taxpayer dollars on something that is not within our purview? We all want to protect kids. We all want to make sure that they have a safe environment, and I think if we wanted to protect kids, we'd be spending time and money on safe routes to schools, making sure that the way our kids get to school in the morning is engineered properly, that we have safe bikeways and walkways for them to get to school, that we can promote not having, 200 kids have 200 parents, all drop them off in cars, in very aggressive manners, to the point which, at my elementary school, we've had to have PD come out and do some enforcement. And I know other schools around the city have had that issue as well. So again, I think, I feel like we're going down a path here that doesn't, again, is outside our purview. And again, I don't understand how an ordinance is going to work. I don't understand, are we going to start prosecuting teachers with the community prosecutor? Are we going to start sending cops in? To that, I just don't, I think that that's a very scary proposition, again, for a law that states that, all it says is that school districts can't change the status quo from what we've had for 150 years. So this kind of seems like drummed up in order to... So this kind of seems like drummed up in order to create the circus that we're in tonight. I will not be supporting this, because I don't understand what it actually is and is asking for, especially as an ordinance. It would've been nice to have seen some actual kind of idea language, because effectively this is gonna come back, I don't know who's gonna work on this with the city attorney to give them direction as to what this looks like, and then it's gonna come back out of closed doors at our next council meeting in September. So, I won't be supporting this. This is, again, forgetting the issue in of itself, there's not enough meat on this, it doesn't make any sense. The slippery slope argument of where is this gonna stop? Or are we gonna let, you know, not tell kids if we're vaping, if they're ditching school? Like, it's a silly argument. Like, this is specifically what's in front of us now, and we talked about this earlier, making hypotheticals. You're making a straw man argument going forward here. So, it's just more acrobats. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bolton.
I just wanna make sure I understand what it is that the city attorney is being directed to do. Is the city attorney being directed to find a way to sue the state over S, whatever it is, SB 1955, AB 1955?
I'm asking him to look at any, explore any options or possibilities for us to assist any parents who would like to overturn AB 1955. I'm asking him to go explore the options.
So we would be representing the parents?
He's exploring the options. There's just an item, and we'll figure it out. If he says there, there's a path over there, then we will. We're looking into the problem. The least we can do for our residents is to look into this issue.
People can, you know, people can have their views on what the bill, what the law tries to do, but I do agree with Councilmember Kalnick that we don't have any jurisdiction over education policy, and even if we attempted to sue, or attempted to sue on behalf of anybody else, we won't have standing. Standing for the residents is the concept that says that you are the correct person bringing a complaint to the court. It's not enough that you are upset about what the law says. You have to be actually injured by the law, directly injured. You can't assert an injury on behalf of a third party. So what I'm having trouble with, in addition to the fact that this doesn't have anything to do with city business, is why would we do this? I mean, I understand that people have their views and people are upset, but you know, I am upset at the price of gas, but I'm not asking the city to do anything about the price of, you know, groceries that I need to feed my kids. It is a question of what lane are we supposed to be in? And the proper way to handle this is not to take city resources to fight this issue. If there is an organization or an individual that wants to band together to do this and sue the state over this, that's great, and that's exactly what should happen, to test it. But to take the city attorney and direct the city attorney to figure out a way to sue the state over this, or figure out a way to represent parents, that's not what this, we're a municipal corporation. We are not here to represent parents in a dispute over education policy. So I also don't really understand what it is that we are trying to accomplish by this, and I will not be supporting the item either.
Thank you. Councilmember Moser.
Well, a lot has already been said that I agree with, but I'm going to really kind of restate some of it, but I'm gonna do so as questions, and I don't need any answers right now, I'm happy to hear them after, but I have a lot of questions. First and foremost, it's important to recognize that, as has been mentioned, the Huntington Beach City Council has no purview or jurisdiction over school districts and educational policies, which are governed by state law, and also our local school boards and school districts. Given this, here are some questions, and I don't need an answer right now. Can you explain how this agenda item falls within the jurisdiction of the Huntington Beach City Council, given that we have no authority over school districts or educational policies? How do you justify spending city resources and time on an issue that is explicitly outside our purview? Regarding potential consequences and the broader implications, how do you envision, as Councilmember Kalnick talked about, this ordinance impacting the relationship between the city and our local schools and our local educators? Again, as was mentioned, considering that Huntington Beach encompasses multiple school districts, with schools like Westminster High School, Fountain Valley High School outside our city limits, but part of the Huntington Beach Union High School District, and other schools within our city belonging to districts outside our boundaries, how do you envision this ordinance affecting our relationships with these diverse school districts and their educators? What are the potential legal and financial implications for the city if we proceed with challenging state law? Again. In the city of Huntington Beach, as in most municipalities, resolutions and ordinances, which has been discussed as well, are both tools used by city council to manage and govern the city, but they serve different purposes and have different processes and legal implications. You have asked for an ordinance, unlike a resolution, which is a formal expression of the city council's opinion, an ordinance has the force of law. Ordinances usually deal with long-term or permanent changes to the city's laws and regulations. Examples include zoning laws, building codes, and other regulatory measures. Ordinances are enforceable by law, and violations can result in penalties such as fines and other legal consequences. Given all that, how will this ordinance be enforced upon educators? Will they face prosecution, penalties, or potential misdemeanors for noncompliance? As council members, our primary, our primary responsibility is to address the immediate needs and challenges facing our community. With pressing city issues, such as concerns around the recent airshow settlement, incoming deficits, and aging infrastructure, how do you prioritize this agenda item over other critical matters affecting our community? In what ways is this proposed ordinance in line with our strategic plan and goals for Huntington Beach? Which section or goal of our strategic plan does this ordinance relate to? Does it address economic development, fiscal stability, high-performing organization, homelessness, housing, infrastructure investment, public engagement, or public safety? Our strategic plan framework categorizes initiatives, and you can look this up, into big rocks, which are the highest priorities, small rocks, which are important but secondary, and sand, which represents minor tasks. Within this framework, is this ordinance considered a big rock, a small rock, or just sand? If we decide to move forward with it, which current initiatives or projects should be deprioritized or postponed to ensure we remain focused on achieving our agreed-upon strategic plan goals within our limited resources? It's also important to note that the mayor and council majority often justify their actions under the guise of protecting our kids, yet the focus appears disproportionately aimed at the LGBTQ community. This has been evidenced through many actions that I won't belabor here tonight, but I will say, how do you respond to the criticism that using the guise of protecting our kids is more about political self-promotion and less about genuine concern for our children's In conclusion, while parental rights are undeniably important, I am a parent myself, this ordinance raises serious questions about its relevance, motivation, and potential consequences. It diverts our focus from pressing priorities and risks legal and financial repercussions. Moreover, the council's pattern of targeting the LGBTQ community under the pretext of protecting children is troubling and divisive and creates a circus within our community. I urge the council to reconsider this proposal and focus, refocus our efforts on addressing the critical needs of our community. And I wanted to note also that it was said that, you know, one, the mayor said, "I don't want to just know about a child's gender identity or expression, I want to know what's wrong with my child." And I think that that infers that if they have a different gender identity and expression that is considered the norm, that it's wrong, and I think that that's concerning. And I also wanna say that parents have the right to create relationships where their children feel comfortable speaking to them. Teachers don't get in the way of that. You have every opportunity, every day, to talk to your children. And also, as I've heard from teachers, we can't even get them to take their earbuds out of their ears. We're not making them become anything. We're trying to educate them. It's difficult. Getting in the way, getting in the middle of this, they don't want to. They want to teach your kids. They're being called pedophiles. They're being called groomers. They want to be called educators, because that's what they want to do. But to remind us, we're not sitting here on a school board. We have no jurisdiction or purview over this item, and we shouldn't be discussing it at all. You can have whatever opinions you like, the community can have those as well. I recommend you address them with your families at the state level and at the school board level. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify one thing. Councilmember Moser, excuse me. It's my turn. Thank you. Councilmember Moser, I'd like to clear one thing up when you said that I do not only want to know if there's an issue with my child's gender, mental health, or anything like that. If they are confused about something, then there must be something wrong. So I'm not saying that it's anything wrong with them having questions about their gender. What I am saying is that I want to know if there are, if those questions are there. So, I don't appreciate you trying to scramble my words. Just like you said, don't put words in my mouth, I'm asking you to be respectful and don't do the same, have the same courtesy. Thank you. Councilmember McKen.
Thank you, Mayor. Remember that theme I was talking about earlier, seems to keep coming up, but I, and I take offense to your claim that we're attacking any member of our community. That's offensive. What's actually offensive is Assembly Bill 1955, which to me is one of the most vile and horrific pieces of legislation to come out of California, and that is saying a lot. The state actually believes that our children belong to them, and they, and that they co-parent our children with us. Councilmember Kalnick's latest propaganda email says that AB 1955 stops school districts from forcing teachers to out their students, and that the discretion still lies with the teacher or administrator. Excuse me? Discretion on what to inform parents about our minor child lies with the teacher or the administrator? Our children don't belong to you. We pay the state of California to educate our children, and if our child does something that we as parents should know about, the state needs to inform the parents. There is no counterargument to this. A parent's right to protect their child is something that needs to be defended with every fiber of our being. It doesn't matter if this is a school issue. This is a bill that affects every family in our community and should be opposed with the full weight of the city council. Like I said before, with the theme I referenced, people elect us and have elected us to protect them and defend them. They feel helpless with these draconian supermajority bills coming out of Sacramento. And there's nothing wrong with using our positions up here to ask our city attorney to look into how we can protect our families and defend their children and parental rights. So I proudly support the mayor's H item, and I'm really thankful that she brought it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Strickland.
I just wanna point out, as a dad, I have a daughter and a son, and my daughter was born first, and there was a book called Strong Fathers, Strong Daughters, that I recommend to any dad that has a daughter. It gave you clues and talked about your role model as a dad for your daughter. And so what I started to do with my daughter, ever since she could start walking, is we did daddy-daughter dates. I took my daughter out to different things, probably monthly, definitely quarterly, but monthly I would take her out, and we would go to the movies, we'd go to the theater, we would do something together, and we would get, and it could be as simple as just going out on a date, and I would open the door for her, I would dress up, she would dress up, and it was our thing that we did. So one day, we're having, you know, a dinner on our daddy-daughter date, and my daughter came up to me, and she was, I could tell something was wrong, and I tried to pull it out of her, and my daughter really clearly didn't wanna talk, but we had that relationship. As some of you have said, you have a relationship, but I will tell you, I had the relationship with my daughter, and my daughter came forward and she said, you know, "Dad, everybody's bullying me in school, and I don't like going to school anymore." And that was a knife in the, in the heart as a dad. And so, went to the school, brought it up, and the principal, the yard duty, the teacher all knew my daughter was being bullied, but did not tell me. And candidly, if I didn't have that relationship with the daddy-daughter dates, I know my daughter. My daughter would not have brought that up in front of her little brother, or in front of her mom. There is no way that we should have teachers, and by the way, for history purposes, I moved my daughter away from that school. So, I did have a right to know as a dad. My, my wife at the time had a right to know, but the teachers did not inform us, and then they wondered why my daughter was having a hard time socializing. Well, we moved my daughter to another school, she flourished, and today she's a straight A student, never gotta be, she's much smarter than me, and I'm much smarter than almost anybody I know. But the reason why I share that story is because that's exactly what we're trying to fight for here. Yes, some of you are right, you should have that relationship as a parent, but if I didn't do those daddy-daughter dates, I guarantee you, she would not have said it in front of her little brother at a family dinner in front of my, in front of my wife at the time. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, sometimes we get back and forth on this stuff. We could talk about the economics, when this bill was passed, two of the most major companies in California fled. We have a question of people in line at private schools because they're leaving the public school. First time in California history, we're, since the gold rush, we actually do a census every 10 years. It's the first time since the gold rush, more people left the state of California than came in. There's many reasons for that, but one of the big reasons are some of these policies that are coming out of Sacramento, and some of the families are just saying, "We can't take it anymore." They're not accepting this, and so they're fleeing, or they're going to private schools. That's unacceptable, because not everybody can afford a private school. Those parents who can't afford a private school deserve to be informed at a public school. And public schools are the fabric of our, of our communities, and those public schools should be focused in on reading, writing, arithmetic, so our kids have a better future and a better tomorrow. But that only happens if everybody works together for that, for that child, and that child hopefully has a better future and better opportunity moving forward. Those are the reasons why I'm supporting this, and those are the reasons why I commend Gracie for bringing this forward. Thank you.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
It's actually a question I already asked, but I asked it rhetorically before, but I actually would like to have an answer to it. How do you respond to the criticism, actually, no, not that one. Given all that, well, that's probably a good one to ask too, but given all that, how will this ordinance be enforced upon educators? Will they face prosecution, penalties, or potential misdemeanors for noncompliance?
We're actually at exploratory phase, and when the item comes back September 3rd, then we'll know what the ordinance looks like.
So potentially, it's in your mind that there, they, our educators may face prosecution, penalties, or potential misdemeanors for noncompliance with a city council of Huntington Beach ordinance that has no purview or jurisdiction over your schools?
We don't know if there will be penalties.
But it's possible.
Anything is possible. Let's just go ahead and wait with our city attorney.
No, hold on, hold on, not anything's possible. No, 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 no. Let's not, like, anything's not possible. We're directing the city attorney, and the city attorney's gonna ensure that we were protecting ourselves as he drafts all this language, and that's a better question for when we bring an ordinance back, and we'll see what the ordinance looks like, and quite frankly, we're gonna run the, I hope the city attorney will run the traps on this and bring it back in a form that is worthy of the council's support.
Anything is possible.
No, I'm telling him that he, excuse me, excuse me, I'm answering.
I'm sorry.
I'm answering what you just said.
I was being sarcastic, I'm sorry. I was being sarcastic.
I'm answering to your sarcasm. I'm answering to your sarcasm. You said, "What is this going to look like?" I said, "We are exploring." That is exactly why the item's going to our city attorney. We are exploring this, we will have all those answers on September 3rd, when we actually have a chance to look into- when we actually have a chance to look into any and all options.
So Councilmember Strickland said that something would be brought back that is worthy of the council. And I said, anything is possible to that. Thank you.
Okay. That is a good rhetorical comment.
Call the question.
Okay, we went ahead. We have a motion and a second.
Yes, motion by Vandermark, second by Burns. Let's go ahead and vote. Councilmember Moser?
No.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Calmick?
No.
The item passes four or three. Councilmembers Moser, Bolton, and Calmick voting no.
Okay, moving on to Councilmember item number 31. Councilmember, please introduce your report for your item.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. This item, I think, is something that has been asked for by the public. And we decided to bring this forward because we still don't, I don't believe have answers. The item's very self-explanatory. We, at least for budget purposes, need to understand what the airshow is now going to cost us annually, just for budget purposes alone, forgetting whether the settlement agreement, you agree with what was given, all the, we still don't understand what this is going to look like from a budget standpoint. There's a lot of money that's being outlaid here. We're still relying on this marketing report. And Mr. McKean, Councilmember McKean, gave a rather detailed narrative at the opening of the last meeting and seemingly negotiated his way down from 3.7 million down to, well, let's say it's a million in revenue in a matter of about five minutes. So I have a lot of concerns about what the airshow actually generates to the city. But all that being said, we need to understand the settlement agreement. Long story short, and we don't because there's vagaries in it. And this is the floor as well, I think, is really the issue. So this is imagining a two-step process that once CEQA was completed, then we enter into a second negotiation over this. But I think any reasonable person's going to come to the conclusion that you're never going to get below the floor of what we've already agreed to. And so I think the residents have demanded to know what this council majority has agreed to. And I think that's kind of the long and short of it. But I think the action item itself is to get a third-party expert to analyze this, to review the settlement agreements, the costs, and then its value. Because there's the cost to the city, and then there's the value that gets created by this agreement. And then understanding what the direct economic benefits are to the city. So proper sales tax and TOT. Because the marketing report that Visit Huntington Beach put out falls apart pretty quickly under scrutiny. And in fact, the Voice of OC asked the current, the economic impact report folks, and they couldn't really defend their numbers. I know our previous staff members had asked about this M Plan kind of black box multiplier. It's a marketing tool, not designed for public policymakers to settle lawsuits on. And so we need to understand in a better way what this looks like. So I think that we can come back within 60 days if we can get an outside financial firm to look at it because the numbers, you know, it's basically public numbers at this point. Someone just needs to calculate all of it. And this is for transparency. And again, this should have been done before we even settled this lawsuit to understand what this was. We had an economic impact report that came out three months after the settlement agreement was signed to the public. And I think the larger thing that's different than I think the next item was that all of this was done behind closed doors. All of this was done behind closed doors, and a member of the public had to sue to get it released. And so I am, you know, my back of the envelope calc on this gets into the tens of millions, if not $100 million over 40 years of what the city has created in value for the settlement agreement. And we never did our kind of basic tools of negotiation. We could have put an RFP out. We could have decided, you know, let's spend some more time. Councilmember McKean talked about some sort of meeting that Sean Joyce and some council members didn't show up to. I'm not aware of any meeting that was going on. My understanding is that former Mayor Del Glaze met with the airshow at some point. We were consistently told that the airshow wasn't going to sue us, wasn't going to sue us. So I don't know the details of that. But I know I was there from the beginning at the oil spill through the settlement agreement and through today or last month when the settlement agreement was finally released. And a lot happened. And, you know, it's disconcerting to have the city attorney kind of parroting the talking points of a litigant in a lawsuit as to who canceled the airshow and how it was canceled, especially when there's still exposure and litigation going on. But this is transparency for the folks, for our residents, to find out what we've, what the city council majority has agreed to. And that's simple. So I'll go ahead and move the recommendation as it stands.
I'll second.
So if my council colleagues that drafted this?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, there's.
Oh, okay. Let her rip.
Two other authors to this.
Come back, Pat, Mayor Pro Tem. So I think that Councilmember Calmick already indicated that the important thing here is that we need to have transparency and accountability. And we think that having a third-party be able to do that, a separate entity, an independent entity do that is valuable for our residents. For me, you know, I started looking at different, I wanted to be able to compare a different coastal large event and see what type of a contract or agreement other large events might have that we can maybe learn from or see what's normally included in. Because as the settlement agreement came out, it essentially has an agreement for up to 40 years of an airshow, offering fees, you know, offering our city services provided at no cost. I thought it was important to better understand, like, is that what people do? Because I've never written a contract for an event before. And so I went and I looked at the city of Long Beach and their Grand Prix. And with that, I found this very thick document that includes their agreement for their Long Beach Grand Prix. And I'm not going to go through all of it, I don't think. But I think it's important to go through parts of it. All right, so let me get myself together because there is quite a bit of information here. one thing is, you know, this agreement that we did with the settlement was done in closed session, behind closed doors. And all of these things that I'm holding here are all done in public. They have public scrutiny. People can come and give public comments on it. They have discussions in public. And, you know, everything is a little bit more open and transparent. Obviously, by contrast, our agreement wasn't done that way. The Long Beach Grand Prix agreement incorporates numerous provisions, as I looked through all of it, designed to safeguard the city's interests, including things like indemnification clauses, stringent insurance requirements. In fact, I read in their agreement that they require insurance to be provided by a certain time. They require very specific amounts for all of the contractors, for the operator, and any changes to the requirements in insurance actually have to come through the city council as a memorandum of understanding. So again, done in public, just to make sure that all those things are taken care of. Also, they have required detailed economic impact reports that are commissioned by the city. The city gets to decide who is going to conduct the report. The interesting thing is, though, that the city is not responsible for paying for that. Neither is their tourist bureau. But actually, the association is what they call it. They are responsible for paying that up to once every three years. These provisions ensure that the city is protected from potential liabilities and that the event generates verifiable economic benefits for the local community. They even had different things like community benefits where they require disadvantaged youth to be served or have programs for them within the contract. So really, what you have in the contract is a negotiating tool. Instead of giving everything away behind closed doors, you have the ability to say, these are the possibilities. You have to have insurance. This is what it must be. They also say in here, you have to get a coastal permit, and you're responsible for paying for it association. So the city in this never pays for any of that. It very clearly states that the association is responsible for that. Clear financial accountability and cost recovery. The Long Beach agreement includes clear mechanisms for reimbursing city expenses, recovering costs, and ensuring full financial accountability from the event operator. They just renewed it for another five-year term. That was in 2022. But prior to doing so, they came forward in August of 2021 with the council asking for a number of questions before they were going to consider the extension of the agreement. One thing to note, and I don't think that it's set up in here later, is that it does say in their agreement that if the association sells or transfers ownership to another entity that's either not a subsidiary or one on top of it, the city can immediately determine that it wants, it can cancel that contract or the agreement as well, which we know that we're not able to do. So I thought that was of note for a large event like that. Another thing that they did, and I think this is a big part of what we're asking for and what we've been asking for, with this memo that they had where the council had questions prior to considering an extension of their agreement, they did a lot of due diligence. And part of that due diligence resulted in, they had a list of activities. Here, I'm going to read from it. "The following list of activities provides a summary of these costs for the 2019 event. Staff from the departments of police, fire, parks, recreation, marine, water, public works, and the Office of Special Events and Filming reported a total of $677,789 in reimbursements related to the event, including a breakdown of the following." And they go through and list all of the different costs essentially from the staff's services. And those are all reimbursed by the association to the city every year. And it's actually tied to the CPI. So every year, that automatically goes up as well. Let's see, also, the economic impact report is required, as was mentioned, as well as that serving the disadvantaged youth. Again, this stands in stark contrast with the Pacific Airshow Settlement Agreement, which does not provide a precise estimate of the financial impact on Huntington Beach taxpayers and lacks provisions for any cost recovery and reimbursement of city expenses. In fact, it does the opposite. We're essentially giving everything away. So regardless of the economic impact to the city, whereas a typical event, and I think we, hopefully, will find this out for events like the U.S. Open, I don't believe that. I think that they're responsible for paying for the services that they use. Another note within this contract is if the city helps the association get a sponsorship, the association actually gives 15% of what they get from the sponsorship back to the city. So there's just all of these pieces that I would love for us to have as options. But unfortunately, we've given them all away with this settlement agreement that was done not in front of everyone. That is interesting. I think, how can we improve transparency and public involvement here? I think that, you know, I'm very concerned with what's happened. And I think that this item is really just seeking to say, how much, how much does this cost? What is the impact to the city? What are we losing on them? What are the costs? I actually don't know what the costs are for each of the departments. And there are these administrative costs. So I would hope that perhaps as we move forward with other large events, I know we normally use a specific event permit. But as we do larger events, that we look at all of the potential negotiating tools that we have so that we can do the most for our city. You know, another thing that they did within that memo before they ended up extending the contract was they went to the community and they talked to them about the negative impacts that the event had on them, whether those right by it or beyond, and also to the businesses. And they tried to work with them to see how they could mitigate those negative impacts and how they can improve the community benefit. We haven't had those conversations because this was done without the ability to do that. And the settlement agreement is essentially a baseline. Like, it's this and more. So I definitely would like for our community, as we move forward with different event agreements, that we consider this type of precedent, that we look for a more balanced and transparent approach. You know, I think that we can host successful and beneficial large-scale events and still allow it to be beneficial for both an operator and for the city. And we should be able to do that with the types of protections, financial accountability, and public involvement that should be incorporated into any agreement the city of Huntington Beach enters into for hosting any event like the airshow or anything else in the future. So I'm going to stop. But I encourage everyone to go and check out this contract and take a look at it because there are so many things in here that, especially with full cost recovery, is specified over and over again. We don't have to give everything away. We are a great city. A business that comes here to serve tourists and to serve our residents should have a business model that mitigates the impacts to our city and is mutually beneficial to everyone and not just a giveaway. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bolton?
All right. So if my council colleagues that drafted this item would just indulge me with answering one question before I start, what long-term contract are you guys trying to audit or cost out?
The settlement agreement itself.
So?
There's essentially a contract within the settlement agreement that's not a quote-unquote contract by basically promising 40 years.
No, actually, that's incorrect. We don't have a long-term contract with the airshow. Mr. City Attorney, do we?
No, and I'm inclined, actually, to ask council to vote now to waive privilege on confidential communications that I shared with city council about the settlement agreement. Because there's this, we're in this strange scenario where we're talking around pretending that certain conversations or information wasn't shared, and it's a disservice to the public.
Yeah.
So if there's a motion to waive privilege so that I can provide information?
Second.
What are we waiving privilege on?
Attorney-client privilege.
Entire?
No, on information. Waive attorney-client privilege on information that I shared with council in closed session about the airshow settlement.
So from what date to what date?
Well, we only, we're in closed session for five to six months about the airshow settlement.
So from when the lawsuit was filed until the settlement was offered?
So December 2022 through the date of settlement.
I move and it's been seconded.
So that's basically everything.
Well, you know, you make these allegations.
No, no, no.
Transparency.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Transparency.
If everybody is willing to waive attorney-client privilege on everything, then yeah, that's fine.
Well, on what I just specified, because there's a lot of what's being said out here that can easily be combated with the facts, so.
It's in the settlement agreement. It's like.
Let's talk about it.
Let's talk about it.
Let's waive privilege and we'll talk about it.
You guys want, let's talk about it.
Waive privilege and we'll talk about it.
Yep.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Moser?
Sure.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Calmick?
Aye.
All right, excellent. So if you could give me a moment and I can respond to Councilmember McKean's questions. On page three of the settlement agreement, which is not, not the long-form contract that this settlement agreement actually indicates, is still yet to come. Okay, so page three.
Can you ever say that, please? This is not a long-term contract.
This is not the long, this is literally. This is not the long, this is literally only to settle the lawsuit itself. This has nothing to do other than contemplation of certain items that may show up, and I'll read it verbatim, right out of the settlement agreement because I have a copy here, the public has it as well. Page three, paragraph two, sub B. If Pacific Airshow desires to conduct future airshow events after 2023, Pacific Airshow and city will enter into a separate airshow event agreement after the aforementioned environmental review pursuant to SEQA is complete. It literally is a settlement agreement that says, if Pacific Airshow seeks to engage the city for a multi-year contract, it will come back. Councilmember Mosher, what you just recited, thumbing through pages of agreement, is literally what we would anticipate coming back to council and being scrutinized in public view. All of this, ladies and gentlemen, and the public should know this, all of this was discussed with council in great detail in the meetings, in closed session. All of this was discussed, including the paragraph that I just read, was discussed in closed session. Council discussed it ad nauseam. We met at least five times. And for the headshakers on the dais who say that didn't happen, I have closed-session memos where I typed all of this out. And it's on the closed-session memos that were presented to city council that they read in closed session and discussed in closed session. So this entire pretending that they were uninformed and they didn't know is a complete charade. They were literally told everything and every detail of this settlement agreement was on closed-session memos, all of it, every single word. And at some later date, if council wants to waive privilege on the memos, I'll publish the memos. Because this entire thing about how we need to know now, two years later, the city council literally knew all this. So the, the, the information that the council earlier, and they were quoted in newspaper articles suggesting that there's something criminal and the attorney general needed to investigate? Where were they two years ago when they were talking about these very terms, these very things in closed session repeatedly?
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
What is the value of the term sheet that is attached to that settlement agreement that you are waving around?
It provides.
Because that is a term sheet. What is the total value of it? What is it?
First of all.
What is it? What is the value of it? Is it, is it $5 million? Is it $7 million? What is the value of the RV parking spaces? If Code Four decides that they want to have these five-year extensions or however many extensions they're entitled to that equals 40 years, what is the value of that?
So there was conversation in closed session on that as well. That was costed out.
No, we never saw that. And if you have a memo.
Well, we can turn to the finance director and ask about the costing that was presented. First, first and foremost. Second of all, when you cost something out into the future, you want to have some level of certainty. There's no guarantee that any of this will be, that'll show up reflected in the final agreement. In fact, paragraph two, sub B says, if PA desires to conduct future airshow events after 2023. We are in 2024. You know from the closed-session communications that it was anticipated that Pacific Airshow would come back with a long-form agreement, just like the one that you were referring to from the Grand Prix, a long-form agreement for this year. And you know what? They chose not to. Pacific Airshow, they, they never came to us and said.
They could not because they had not completed SEQA because the contract contemplated by the settlement agreement requires SEQA, which is why that whole section is there.
And why are they selling tickets for the 2024 airshow? Because we don't have a, we don't have a contract.
They're doing it pursuant to a permit on the one hand. On the other hand, Mr. Kelmick, they can still engage in, it's going to take, it's going to take months to negotiate this agreement. And they could have started that process months ago, even with SEQA being, being conducted.
So you're saying that the, you have not engaged in any contractual agreements with Pacific Airshow about a future contract?
Zip.
Mr. Attorney, if I can jump in?
Nothing. And you would have heard about it. Because the city council's not kept in the dark. The attorney, I have under, I have a state bar obligation to inform the client of everything. I am more concerned about keeping my state bar standing, good standing, than this, trying to hide some detail here or there. Literally, it's my obligation under the state bar to share everything with the client. I did so for five or six meetings in early 2023. The council knew everything about this agreement, and it was voted on and entered into.
Thank you. All right, so I'd like to continue my thoughts.
Just a minute. So when I have asked questions about what the total value of this agreement is, I have never gotten an answer. And that is something that I have asked about. That is something that has been a part of our discussions with the CFO in closed session. I have never gotten an answer. I cannot give these people, when they say, well, how much is all of this going to cost? And we're talking about what maximum exposure is. You've got a term sheet there, okay? So you've got some basic terms that are going to go into this new agreement. Presumably, we're going to have a new agreement because they're selling tickets for the 2024 airshow and SEQA has to be completed and then we can negotiate the new agreement. But it says at a minimum, it's going to include those terms that you have in that term sheet. Otherwise, why, why put them there?
Councilmember.
It's for the purpose of establishing a baseline. And so what I am saying is, I have asked a simple question. What is, what is the value of all of this? If you add it up, we want to know what our maximum exposure is. You don't, I, I can't imagine. You want to know what all, how much are we going to potentially be on the hook for? Because that's how you budget for it. If you have no idea, how, how are we going to make sure that we can pay for all of this in the future?
So that you would, so that you would want more financial information is not, that's not what I'm debating. I'm debating the mischaracterization of the information that has been shared, that I shared repeatedly with council. That was the subject of discussion repeatedly in closed session. And we're all pretending out here like it never happened. The second thing is, the second, hold on, please don't interrupt me, council member. The second thing is, this, I would suggest to you requires a crystal ball to cost, because this is subject to negotiation. In other words, Pacific Airshow may decide, look, the parking is too complicated with Coastal Commission. So we're now not going to look for this number of parking spaces. We'll look for something else. All of that is going to come back to council in negotiations. So I'll stop there.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, thank you.
But I think it's important that the public, and you know, I know a lot of these soundbites are out there because the press is covering this too. A lot of this to me, because I know what I know and I know what my obligations are and I have it all in writing, is a sham. And it's disappointing and it's deceptive. And you talked about how misinformation is dangerous to the public, and yet you do it repeatedly, including that I somehow said that the settlement deal was reasonable. I don't make value judgments. I went out and told the press what council members have said about justifying the settlement. Council members have said, we don't want to avoid the risk of trial. We would rather have the $120 million of economic benefit returned to the region. That's what council members have said.
Not to the region.
Whoa, 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 stop, 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 stop. The region was not expressed in December, in, in closed session. It was to the city. This number of, the $120 million of economic impact has shifted because it becomes less and less viable number.
You're missing the point. I have never, ever, 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 ever offered a value judgment that this is a reasonable settlement. That's not my purview. That's up to council members to make. And I've only repeated what council members have said.
I don't, I mean.
Check your campaign email.
Point of order, you guys have spoken, it's my turn. So I had a question. Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney, for answering that. So to repeat, we do not have a long-term contract with the airshow. A long-term contract for the airshow would have to be brought back to council, negotiated, costed, reviewed, presented to the public so that the, the public can review, scrutinize, provide comments before a contract would be approved, which means there will be an opportunity to potentially obtain more beneficial terms for the city. Everything you guys have said, some members of the public speakers have asked for, guess what? That's when that would occur. And your Long Beach Grand Prix example is not analogous. That's a new event. This was a lawsuit settlement that you guys had over 10 months to try to avoid from happening, but couldn't do. So an audit over a future hypothetical contract is a waste of time and taxpayer money because it's not finalized. That future agreement has not come to council yet. So we can't cost it now as it's hypothetical. The numbers that the attorney released earlier are actual costs. That's why they were released initially. And again, this is the danger of politicizing lawsuit settlements because not everyone is operating with all of the facts and variables. And now residents do not understand and realize that we don't have a long-term contract with the airshow with council-approved terms. So this is just more fear-mongering by you three.
Residents are not stupid.
I'm still, I'm still speaking. Councilmember Kelmick sent out another propaganda email full of lies meant to sow division and hatred in our community. He said, quote, "Some have estimated the airshow settlement as a giveaway of nearly $100 million over 40 years to a campaign donor." False. Never received a donation from the airshow applicant. And who has estimated $100 million? And $100 million, really? We don't have a long-term contract, so how can this be? He said, "Our attorney gave away tens of millions." Again, completely false. How can he make these flat-out lies based on a long-term contract that, again, doesn't exist? If and when a future long-term contract comes to the city, that will be the appropriate time to do any costing exercises. If you're not happy with the economic impact report performed by one of the top firms in the industry and generated by Visit HB, whom we pay to create such reports, then choose another top firm to perform an economic impact report. Plus, didn't you guys already employ your state constituents to perform an audit? Lastly, I want to remind everyone that the actions of the previous council majority led to the litigation of the airshow. They had over 10 months to find an amicable solution in order to prevent litigation and refused to even meet with the applicant. As Kelmick mentioned, there was even a meeting set up with the applicant, city council members, and the city manager at that time, and the city participants no-showed to the meeting. They could have put their personal differences aside and shown leadership to find amicable solutions, concessions, et cetera, for the benefit of both parties, but instead decided to not even meet after several attempts by the applicant. Was this because of personal animosity, politics, poor business acumen, incompetence? We may never know, but they had every opportunity to avoid litigation and they chose not to. If you want to cost out the past airshows, as these are, as though that is not hypothetical, then that could be done through my upcoming H item. So please, add that to the H item that's coming up. Thank you.
Councilmember Strickland.
I'm glad that you clarified that to the city attorney because one of the things I was going to ask, and I want to make it clear again. You know, they use quotes like closed door, transparency, you only had a memo. My understanding, not only did we go over it in closed session, every item that's on that agreement, that all seven members of the council had access to that, regardless of the lawsuit that was put forward. Is it correct that all seven members had access to this settlement agreement?
Absolutely. And if I could add to fill in, to color this a little bit more too. There were some council members who, along with me, were in regular communication with Pacific Airshow to try to strike a deal. And on two occasions, no fewer than two occasions, was there a complete breakdown in negotiations and a complete impasse. And I told at least one of you on multiple occasions, I don't think we're ever going to get a deal. We're too far apart. So these negotiations, this whole notion that we just gave everything away, that is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. I have negotiated hundreds of deals related to lawsuits, and this frankly was one of the more difficult ones. Way, way, way more difficult than many others.
And again, I would like to also add to that comment and the narrative. You know, I've done a lot of negotiations as well, and this is one of the most difficult ones that I've went through. In fact, some of the narratives out for some in the community, and I don't know who they give this information to, says, oh, we want to give this to a friend. He's a supporter, et cetera, et cetera. One, I didn't know Kevin Elliott, you know, when I was running. Secondly, I met him towards the end of the campaign. Thirdly, I have over 300 to 400 campaign contributors to my campaign for city council. He's not one of them, not one of them. And in fact, when we went through this settlement, I could recall three or four occasions where he told me to go pound sand. And I'm being very nice with that language. So, you know, this narrative is just a false narrative. The other part is, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, and this is for the, remind the audience and remind the community, we did not, we, we are not the ones who canceled the airshow without going through the proper process. That was a previous council. We were not the ones who voted no to not sue the oil company. That's a previous council. What I will say is, it is one of my, as mayor, one of my accomplishments, it says, we did save the airshow because of the kind of revenue it brings for the city. It's a net positive for the city. In fact, I will tell the community right now, please hold me accountable and us accountable for saving the airshow. Please give us, me and us, the credit for the economic vitality that it's going to bring to this city. In fact, the one thing that you did point out is you don't like the Visit HB's firm that did the economic impact report. I will also move that we hire a different firm to, to go along with Mr. McKeon's item so we can have another top firm that does economic surveys do an economic survey. Because the economic survey that was done by Visit HB, again, $120 million to the general area and $70 million directly, that's what they came up with. And the reason why you have economic impact reports is because there's certain quantifiers that are part of that economic impact. One is, 700,000 people come from outside of Huntington Beach to go to the airshow. 86% of them say they come back because they have a positive experience on Huntington Beach. You're not going to get that for an audit. That's an economic impact that's good for our whole community. That's why you do these economic impacts. In fact, it's not uncommon for many cities to offer incentives to big events. And let me just go through a few of them. Mammoth Lakes budgets $650,000 in public funds for their events, $250,000 to host the OCR Spartan World Champions. Rose Bowl and Rose Parade, Pasadena Invest heavily hosting these events from city funds. The LA Marathon, the LA city spends $500,000 per year for the LA Marathon. On top of that, the DWP, which is a LA public entity, sponsors that event to the tune of $112,000 per year. And then when we look at economic impact reports, big events do this all the time. Comic Con, which is a big deal in San Diego, draws in many, many residents. And it's a huge impact for the city of San Diego. 135 attendees come in. It provides, again, according to an economic survey, $165 million to their local economy. LA Olympics 2028, they actually, I was inquired by the LA Times. And I said, "Well, why don't you look at one of your impact reports?" I'm happy to use the one that you did. In fact, they did a forecast that they're going to get $11 billion in economic input from behind the LA Olympics. Oh, by the way, they got $900 million in federal taxpayer funds in order to do that. They got $900 million to bring the LA Olympics to 2028 of your taxpayer money. So it's not uncommon. And again, I will just say, the hyperbole here is out of control. At the end of the day, do hold us accountable because the airshow is a net positive for our city. I'm happy to move that we get another firm to take a look at it because that actually takes into account the whole economic impact. And we want to go cost savings analysis, the, what do you say, cost revenue analysis? Happy to have that. I'm happy to put that into Casey McKeon's item. And I will actually substitute motion, the current motion, that we add those things into Casey McKeon's item that's coming up next. And I move that we do that. Because if you want transparency, that's what transparency is. You have to look at the whole picture of what the cost and revenue is for the city of Huntington Beach. And this is a net positive, positive, positive. And please hold me accountable for the economic impact and the jobs and the economic impact it creates for the city of Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Second.
I'd like to point out that she never answered my question. And I am glad that we waived attorney client privilege on all of the closed session material because I fully expect someone to file a Public Records Act request for all of that material. So thank you.
Well, I think the motion was pretty clear that it's what I presented to council in closed session.
We said, you said waive everything between the dates of December 2022 and what was the end date until the thing, until we sign the settlement agreement? So yeah, let's just open up everything. Open up everything. I'm sure, you know, if, hey, if a deal is, if a deal is sound, I don't think anybody will have an issue with folks kicking the tires. But we do have to be careful about who does the auditing because not another firm that does marketing studies. It needs to be an auditor, an actual auditor.
And the reason why you do an economic impact report versus Otter? Because an economic impact report, people who do that, look at this exact example that Otter will not have. The 700,000 people that come from outside of Huntington Beach that come here, they come back. 86% of them, that brings economic impact, that wouldn't be in your audit. That's why the LA Olympics and all these big events, the NCAA Final Four, the Super Bowl and all these have these firms that do this because that's what they do. And they look at the whole economic impact, not just the audit.
I think a firm will be capable of doing that. I think a reputable firm will be capable of doing that. Not anybody's brother in law. Please.
So, so Destination Analysts, they're, they're not a marketing firm. They perform economic impact reports.
But they can't show their work. So it has to be somebody that can show their work. Somebody who says, "I'm sorry, it's a black box, we can't, we can't explain how it, how it works."
So then why did the, why did the Byron Nelson PGA hire them? Why did the NBA All-Star game, the LA Marathon, the Firestone Grand Prix?
They are not municipal corporation who is responsible to taxpayers. They can hire whoever they want. We're responsible to these people.
The reason you can't answer your question is because it's hypothetical. We don't have a long term contract to cost out. It's hypothetical, it's subject to change.
I'll tell you, I trust them more than the OC voice to do the economic impact.
We have a term sheet, they can cost out a term sheet.
Councilmember Moser.
When City Attorney Gates and others, Councilmember McKeon claimed that nothing is final and there will be future contract negotiations.
Absolutely.
You should refer to Section 2B where it clearly states that if Pacific Airshow desires to conduct future events, the airshow event agreement must be consistent with the terms of this settlement. The future agreements will expressly provide the same benefits to the Pacific Airshow that the city conferred under this agreement. So therefore, if that's what's in this agreement, that's the baseline for everything. And another thing, we weren't saying that you didn't present all of these deal points in closed session. That's not, I'm speaking. That's not what I said. What I said was, we were never presented with damages, by the way. And we never had any financial calculations as to what this would be because it essentially is creating a long term agreement here. You can say that it's going to be negotiated. It could be negotiated and be worse, certainly. But we've already said here, it's going to expressly include what was included in this settlement agreement. And by the way, why in a settlement agreement would we even be talking about? I'm assuming that they said, and I never saw it, so I have no idea, that there was 5 million plus in damages. How that could be from one day's event blows my mind. I have no idea because I never saw it. And actually, at the town hall about this, you said we saw it and we never saw it. So you lied. Absolutely. I never saw any damages at all for this.
That's completely not true.
No, it is not. We did not see any damages for this.
Well, we could take, we could take a vote. Does anybody disagree with Councilmember Moser? Because this stare down is a little fruitless.
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that you let us know, and again, this is a while ago, you let all seven of us know that we can come to your office anytime and look at any part, including the economic part of that settlement.
Yeah, and but before that, before that, when we were talking about, and there were different iterations of the settlement. So this, this, the 5 million plus, that's, that's a later version. The earlier version was much different. During those versions, there was conversations about damages and what his claimed losses were. So there were, there were conversations about it.
Before they got here, is that what you're saying? That there were different conversations about the damages prior to them being? Because I don't recall that ever happening in closed session, actually seeing a list of damages and a detailed list.
Well, there were detailed lists of damages shown and they were shown to a couple of council members.
Oh, there we go.
And those council members expressed to you in closed session.
I remember talking about it in closed session. I don't remember actually seeing numbers, but I do remember talking about them. But I want to note one thing.
I wasn't quite done yet, I'm sorry.
Oh, God, please.
No, I think that the other thing with this is, if the damages were 5 million, and again, I don't know how that could be and never saw them. But why would we then proceed to put any of this in there? If you're saying there's going to be future negotiated contracts and agreements, why would you even put any of this in there? We had to win them over with a promise of 40 years? But then is it not really a promise? It doesn't really count? I don't, I don't understand that. And the other thing is, I said, when we voted on this, to be very clear, we did see the deal points. And we voted, the three of us voted no. And when I voted no, I said, "This is criminal." And why didn't we bring this up to the community? Because it was done in closed session. And because I don't have counsel that I can go to to say, "If I think this is criminal, counsel who has recommended this negotiation, can I go out and talk about it without being in trouble?" Because frankly, I would say the answer to that is no. Which is why we didn't go out and spread the word that this was criminal, in my opinion.
You can pick up the phone and call the DA anytime.
Oh, who just gave you a certificate honoring you? I mean, these are challenging situations for us to deal with. And you said that if we had a crystal ball, we could see the future. The crystal ball is in the settlement agreement. You placed it there, documented it, and it's expressly provided. We voted no, and by the way, again, I'll bring it up again. When I asked to see it, because we didn't see the signed agreement in session, right? We saw the deal points and then we knew it was, it was executed. And so we can bring it up, what happened when I asked to see it, if you'd like.
Go for it.
Sure. So when I asked to see it, I asked as your client to be able to have a copy of the agreement. And you told me no, that I could come to your office and see it if I'd like. And I said, "I'd like to have a copy of the agreement." I then asked if I could see it in closed session. You said, and I have this all written here, by the way, in an email. You said, I could, I asked if I could come see it in closed session. And you said, "I'll have to check with the mayor." And I said, "Why would you have to check with the mayor? You can watch me read this, I don't know what the problem is." And then you said, "I check with the mayor." You can see how ridiculous this is. Actually, here it is. I have it all right here. "I'll ask the mayor." "The mayor is a ceremonial position," I said, "and as a council person just like me, he doesn't have the authority to determine whether or not you comply with my request. Why are you asking the mayor?" You replied, "Do you see my point now? You're making a strange request when I've opened up my office and availability to you as if you're my boss or I'm your secretary." Neither are true. "I do certain things authorized by the entire majority of council, not individual members. At this point to me, his voice is as good as yours and I just asked him and he said no." So I couldn't have actually reviewed the contract in closed session with you watching me. I had to come to your office and see an agreement that is the client I was a participant in.
Okay, are you done?
And if we're going to talk about, are we going to talk about earlier today? The way that you treated me in closed session? I mean, no, because this is unacceptable. You have, you have said that we are slandering you and are lying. You have specifically lied about multiple things here.
Are you done?
Just for a second. I just want to remind, you three remember, are the same three that put on a charter amendment to take the man's job. So there's a lot of history already.
Because the city attorney position shouldn't be political and this goes to show why.
Chill out the attacks, just stay professional.
Can I, can I respond?
Yes, please.
Okay, so first of all, the entire settlement agreement terms was presented to city council in closed session and it was voted on. But there were still a couple small items that remained to be determined by Pacific Airshow. In other words, what often happens is, the city council will say, "Yes, we agree with this. Go see if the other side, whoever it is, will agree to this set of terms." And so that's what happened. I was given the authority that if Pacific Airshow would agree to the terms that were presented in council, I was given the authority that the city could then go off and execute on the agreement. That's classic, that's typical. That's what happens all the time. And so the settlement agreement ultimately was signed, I think, a week and a half after the council meeting where the city council voted. So on the, on the, on the terms to agree. So literally, you're sitting here pretending like you were deprived of something or gosh, you weren't able to see something. But literally, a week and a half before the agreement was entered into by Pacific Airshow, you saw literally the exact same terms and voted on them. And yes, you voted no, but you saw them all and voted on them a week and a half before the agreement was executed. So you weren't deprived literally of anything, not a single word in that agreement that you voted on, voted no, was changed to the version that the Pacific Airshow had signed off on. And all you have to do.
And all I wanted to do was confirm that because I don't trust that that would necessarily have happened, which is why I asked to see them.
And you were welcome to come to my office.
And I did come see them. And I did validate that. And I've never said that they were different.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
What I said was, you didn't allow your client to have it.
Thank you for admitting that.
But, but you know, for the audience's point also, like when we were going through the POA agreement, the fire, you know, I wanted to take some of that information with me. And I was not allowed to take that information with me because it was a closed session. The same thing, if I need to go to the city manager's office or the city attorney, I have to do that. Like I did with this, I actually scheduled an appointment. I remember going through item by item on this settlement agreement.
There's so much angst and so much misinformation. We're all pretending like we don't know how government works. This is classically how government works.
40 year contract in a settlement agreement?
This is exactly how negotiations go in closed session. This is exactly how it goes with city council in closed session. This is exactly how they are finalized and executed. This is exactly how it goes. And then you mentioned earlier, when you bring these terms, during negotiations, ladies and gentlemen, this is another key factor. The city attorney is just the messenger running back and forth between the two parties. Any lawyer, whether it's your own because you're in a motor vehicle accident or any other, that attorney, when you're trying to resolve a case, resolve a dispute, they're literally just running messages back and forth. None, I can tell you this, none. None of the terms in the agreement were my original idea derived by me, thought of by me. They were literally a compilation of terms going from Pacific Airshow to city council or city council members and back. I literally, my fingerprints are on not a single one of these terms as my idea or my term or my endorsement, not one of them. That's the way it works. But I know, we can sit here and pretend that's not how it works. But that's literally how it works in every single negotiation with every single attorney. And you all know this from your own experiences with your attorneys. They're running information back and forth.
Okay, point of order at 11 o'clock.
11 PM, I'm sorry, we need to vote to continue on this. So do we have any objections? We have, everyone want to continue past 11? Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
So a couple of things that got said, I just want to get some clarification on. So again, as far as I know, I was unaware of any meeting that was stood up. I was not scheduled to go to any meeting with Kevin Elliott or Code Four. So I have no idea what you're talking about with regard to whoever was here. I know secondhand that I think the mayor at the time, Barbara Glaze, went to meet with Kevin. I don't know what you're talking about with regard to that. And we were told all through 2022 that the airshow was not going to sue us. That was the information we were getting from the city manager. The interesting thing about negotiations, and I have some questions about this. Like the city council, to my recollection, never authorized any council member to go negotiate with Code Four for the settlement agreement. And it's surprising to hear that you guys were helping to negotiate. Sounds like that was going on. I'm unclear as to, I was under the impression that the city attorney was negotiating this and bringing us back deal points. I didn't know that other council members were involved in that negotiation. Since we waived privilege, we received a demand letter on December 16th, 2022 from Kevin's attorney. I'm assuming that's now public, right? We've waived privilege, I can read that. So I can see the delta between what he originally asked for in December of 2022 and what the settlement agreement is. There's not a lot of difference between that. You guys negotiated real hard and the delta is pretty negligible. It's now a waived document, I think I can read it.
I don't, I would clarify with council if it's waived. I don't know that it is.
Said you waived all closed session items for 2022.
I said, "End of '22," which is December 31st, 2022, through the date of settlement. So that was my motion. If council wants to waive more privilege, fine. I will add this, the council waived attorney client privilege. So my communications with you, when it comes to confidential communications between other attorneys, that's a different privilege. I don't think we're entitled, myself too, to start revealing what other attorneys or other communications have, have occurred.
Well, the settlement agreement's already executed. So I mean, why not? It's just a demand.
My understanding was we waived everything from December.
December 2022.
Not the end of.
I'm not waiving.
I said, "End of the year 2022."
Yeah, I'm not going to waive another attorney's privilege, no way.
It's not the attorney, it was their demand letter that was given to me by you, the city attorney, in an email.
If you want scope creep on the privilege or the discussion, we can keep going.
But it was, yeah.
Now, now I mean, clearly, we're not even on topic anymore.
Well, no, because you talked about the negotiation, that it was hard fought negotiation over six months. And the delta between what you guys agreed to and what the original demand was, there's not a lot of light a day between that. So very confusing about the fact that we have negotiators that were negotiating. I guess my larger question, you know, for, as we get down this, because we're again, trying to find out what the total value of this is, right? Because again, I don't think anybody thinks that we're going to go below the floor here of what.
How do you know that to be true?
I mean, I'm a reasonable person.
Because it says so.
Right? Like why would, why would anyone leave money on the table?
Let's just play this out, guys. Like a long term contract would come back. And like I said, there'll be an opportunity.
But it's not going to be any less.
There'll be an opportunity to obtain more beneficial terms to the city. And theoretically, the applicant could be like, "No, take it or leave it." And then we go, "All right, leave it or take it." But there's, there is going to be an opportunity to obtain more beneficial terms. So anything you cost out now is premature, it's hypothetical, it's not a long term contract.
No, no, the agreement's the floor and he can continue to apply.
There will be an opportunity.
The airshow can continue to apply for specific event permits. And I don't know what the terms for 2024 are going to be. Are they going to follow this agreement or are we going to?
Yeah, exactly, we won't know until they come back, they propose a long term contract.
For the specific event for 2024, because they're, my understanding is that the airshow has pulled an application for a specific event permit for 2024. They're selling permits, or they're selling, they're selling tickets. So yeah, so I mean, overall, I wanted to know what, what we agreed to as an analysis of this, that's the floor. Like I don't see any reasonable person that has this contract holding it up and saying, "Well, you know what, I've got all this great stuff, I'm just going to, you know, start over from scratch." Like this is going to be the floor, they're not going to give anything away. I don't see anybody giving anything away for the value of what you can kind of tease out from this. Yeah, I mean, also, you know, again, from the privilege side of what was presented, like there were some wild terms that were originally presented in the closed session memo that are actually somewhat different than what we agreed to. And I also, you know, some of the stuff that this council was ready to agree to and staff was ready to say, "No, you can't agree to that." And like, "No, it's fine, it's fine." Like you, there was, there are terms that effectively were not great. And it was just, "Yeah, we'll take the first offer." Like it's absolutely wild to me that we got to that. And that's why I want to understand, from forgetting the merits of any of this, to understand what we are on the hook for budget wise is what we need to do. Like forget that if the airshow generates X amount of dollars, I said non-zero, meaning not a zero number. In my comments, I said, "Yes, we all agree it generates some non-zero amount of revenue to the city, direct revenue to the city in the form of increased sales tax and the fact that the hotel rooms increase their value of the rooms, the cost of the rooms, and we receive hotel tax, 10% hotel tax on it." No one is disputing that those hotels go from maybe 50 to 60% full at 500 bucks a night to completely full at 3,000 bucks a night or 1,500 bucks a night. I don't know what the going rate is, it's somewhere in, somewhere in that number. Again, like that's a number, since we do have the ability to audit TOT, it's a number we should be able to know. And we should be able to ask the hotels what the rate is and figure out that number. We also did a MasterCard analysis back in, you know, years ago, understanding year, you know, week before, a week after the airshow, to understand what sales tax was and we're able to extrapolate spending in a more judicial manner. So again, this item is to look at what the cost. Now I guess, I mean, to sum all this up.
If you don't mind?
I don't, give me one second. Is to find out, you know, the total cost here and to understand this. I guess the larger question is, and again, since we've waived some privilege here, did we file an insurance claim with our insurance company to try to get the settlement covered by our insurance company?
So yes, but I'm not going to get into that either. Because that's not part of this and there's not a final determination on that. So and I don't want to jeopardize that either.
Okay, are there any communications from them or anything like that?
I'm sure there are.
Could you provide those to us, please, when you get a chance? I'm interested to see, like, why there's not a final determination two years in here.
Short answer is, they don't until the lawsuit's completed. And right now, there's still an outstanding portion.
Sure, which we should, yeah. And the fact, I think, brings a finer point of, this actually wasn't a global settlement and still potentially risks us to exposure for the other half of the case, which was, you know, Kim Karas, other half of the case, which was, you know, Kim Kars, the fact that she's being sued personally in this regard. So I think that that's also an interesting point in understanding the value of this. Like, you get a second bite at the apple, and the city still has exposure. So I find that also interesting. So again, we had a motion on, on the floor, I don't know if there's a substitute-
I did a substitute motion.
The substitute motion doesn't make sense, though. You can't, I don't understand how you substitute motion for an item we haven't discussed yet.
It's just a first motion.
I think you just vote down the first motion, if that's what you're interested in.
There was no first motion, right?
Mine was, I motioned-
There was.
Yes.
Yes, and he made in second.
No, so, so my substitute motion is that we hire outside economic firm to, because clearly, these folks don't trust the numbers from Visit HB. So I do a substitute motion that we do an economic firm that's not the current one that Visit HB has, to look at the numbers that provide. Because, again, when you talk about the audit, what he doesn't mention, one of my council colleagues on the dais, is, again, the reason for those economic surveys is, you don't capture the 700,000 people, let's say they're coming back to Huntington Beach, 86% of them come back because they have a positive experience.
And spend more money.
There's no way to measure it otherwise. So that was my substitute motion, that we do another economic firm that's clearly not the one that's done by Visit HB.
Okay.
What's an economic, I want to understand what an economic firm is, right? Like, is it-
I second.
People, firms, like the one that did Visit HB, that look at big events, and they do economic impact reports.
Sure, but not an analysis of the value of this? Like, I want a, I want an analysis of the value by an honor.
They'll, they'll, they'll analyze everything. That's, that's a part, is because you only want to analyze one, one half of it. You don't want to do the whole, the whole pie of it.
We have understanding of the soft, the soft benefits, right? The people that come back.
No, clearly, we don't.
No, no, we do, but-
Because you push back on the 120, and you push back on the 70 direct.
Because I'm looking, because you're comparing apples to oranges. Like, I'm trying to compare what the actual costs to the city are for this, and like, what our potential budgeting costs are versus ancillary, interesting economic benefit to the region.
See, almost every big event, it doesn't look at as ancillary. There's a reason why you hire these firms for the LA Olympics. The, the Long Beach Grand Prix hires one. What did you say, the firm that, Visit HB, Mr. McKean, you mentioned- All-Star Game. Yeah, Super Bowl, like, all of them.
But those aren't, like, interesting, those aren't in the middle-
This is the largest airshow in the country.
I don't know.
This is the largest airshow in the country.
I can't prove that, right?
It is true. One of the, one of the number one airshow in the country, tiers in a row, never been done before, the premier event.
Based on, again, what metrics are, though? Biggest number of planes, number of people, number of volumes.
By the way, that's my, that's my substitute, that's my substitute motion. That's my substitute motion, I believe it's been seconded.
I second it. I think the challenge here, though, is that's not what we were asking for in the item. Like, that's literally not the same thing as what's asked for in the item, which I don't know that that really makes sense, that you can provide a substitute motion that does something completely different than what we were trying to get to, which is, an economic impact report is not going to look at our settlement agreement and figure out the value of what's included in there, nor are they going to look at what, kind of the memo that I did earlier, that Long Beach did, which provided the administrative services and all the fees and all of those things that go into an event and are calculated with that, which would also help us to understand the costs of things.
Well, and, and what I would add to that, council member, respectfully, is wait till file item 32 on that item. But also, again, this is all hypothetical. It doesn't make sense to do an audit and waste taxpayers' money until you have a final agreement. When it comes back, when it comes back, for the final agreement to be approved by council, that's when you cost it out, that's when you audit, that's, it's, this is all conceptual and hypothetical, it's subject to change. You're wasting time and resources.
But the $5 million was not, was, is hypothetical, and we already paid that, we're paying that out.
That you know what the number is. It's $5 million bucks, it's 4.9999. You know what it is.
I, which, okay, but, but we never saw the damages or the costs or the values of that either. So, I mean, you should have, it is, we should have analyzed that in advance as well.
Well, the OCPA, you guys thought that was going to cost us all kinds of-
We'll talk about that in the next item.
Madam Clerk, I move the previous question and move forward the, the substitute motion.
Right, and so I just want to make clear, an economic firm that different from the VHB, the one used for the VHB analysis-
And they've changed their name, by the way, so we can't hire the company.
Sure, yeah, can't be the same company. Whatever they changed their name to, cannot be the same company.
I don't know what that name is. Okay. All right, so, does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
All right, okay, let's go ahead and vote. Councilmember Moser.
Did you, did she hear? Passed.
Okay. Councilmember Bolton.
No.
Did you say no?
Yes, I did. I said no.
I'm sorry. Mr. Burns, sorry. It's getting late.
Yes.
Okay. Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Calmick?
No.
All right, so-
No, sorry. Bringing it back to me.
Yes, I'm going back to you. All right, so the, the vote is four, three, with Moser, Bolton, and Calmick voting no.
All right, I know it's late, I'll try to wrap it up. My item, there's been a number of questions, obviously, just like now, raised about how taxpayer dollars are spent, now taxpayer dollars are shared in favor of big business in the city. The truth of the matter is that the city works with big business all the time to establish long-term lucrative and/or economically beneficial relationships. Due to the public's interest in how taxpayer dollars are spent and/or shared with, for big business, I'm requesting that the city staff present the following financial information at the council meeting, I think it's September 17th, the second, the second council meeting. So here's some examples of interest. What tax paying, tax sharing or incentives, if any, were provided to Amazon for locating its warehouse in North Huntington Beach? What was the total amount of foregone rent revenue as a result of the city council's March 31st, 2020 action implementing rent abatement for tenants at various city-owned facilities related to COVID relief? How much of the sharing or discount or write-off of rents that were contemplated by leases between lessees in the city, i.e. the difference between what the city would have received in aggregate over the years at the regular rental rates specified in the original leases, minus what the city actually has received in rents, if anything, during the rent abatement period? Equate to what the list of businesses, lessees, who were subject to the COVID rent abatement program, list the time period of when COVID rent abatement was in effect for each of those businesses, lessees, list the amount of rent each business lessee did not pay during that rent abatement period, identify when the rent, rent abatement period ended. What tax sharing or incentives have taken place due to their agreements with the car dealerships for locating and improving car dealerships in Huntington Beach? Additionally, how much is the sharing or city tax revenue foregone by the city, i.e. the difference between what the city would have received in the aggregate over the years at the regular rate of tax, minus what the city actually has received in the aggregate over the years at a discounted rate of tax since the inception of the subs, of the subject agreements? How much property tax per year will the city, will the city forego through the breakwater and Elon property purchases? Further, and this is key, how much foregone property tax revenue will be, or property tax will be owed to local government and educational agencies like the County of Orange, Coast Community College District, Municipal Water District of Orange County, et cetera, upon conveyance of the properties? How much foregone property tax will be owed to those jurisdictions? And five, a catch-all, any other example of cost sharing, tax sharing, or other type of financial concessions to a private entity in the last five years? These arrangements are beneficial to both parties and are a common city practice, but since there's been some interest in a particular arrangement with the business that we just talked about ad nauseam, it's only fair to showcase all arrangements throughout the city. I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager and finance director to report back to council at the second meeting in September with a written report, oral presentation with answers to all of the aforementioned questions. Thank you.
I have a quick one. I have a concern, because I don't believe we have a finance director that will be here to be able to take care of this request.
Sure, we'll have an interim, and I'm highly confident the city manager that we can pull this off. Thank you.
Are we looking for someone right now, and have we found anybody? Are there any possibilities?
No, the process has just begun, so it's ongoing.
Typically, it takes a little while to be able to hire and get somebody through a process. I'd say at least a month.
For a full-time, potentially, but we're, we're looking for interims at the moment. I can't tell you how long it could be, but reasonably a couple of weeks to a month.
Okay. I just, I also think that, given the situation with that, it's going to be challenging for this timeframe to be able to turn around in that timeframe.
Documents are public record, it's, already exists, it's not too hard to pull them all together and whip them in a spreadsheet and come back in 45 days.
Let me also say that I'm for transparency, and I would love to see all of the data. I hope that we can have the airshow in there as well.
Number five is a catch, number five is a catch-all.
I hope it catches that.
Yep.
And then also, I think with number four, I think that it's important to not just look at one side of the equation, as was talked about earlier, that you look at the, the end game of that as well. So I hope that everything is looked at with a more broad perspective and gathers all of the information.
Madam Mayor?
Okay. Councilmember Calmick.
Thank you so much. With regard to number two, obviously, I think in the same vein, the amount of reimbursement that the city was given from federal government for that, I think is relevant to that discussion, as the number of businesses that received money and all of that. I think it's great that-
Sure.
That we need to bring all that through.
For sure.
Again, with regard to the ability to meet this goal, we don't have a current finance director currently, so there'd be no way to do that. Our CFO's last day is the end of the month, and we have to do a recruitment. And there's, and our budget manager, who's an AC, ACO is leaving.
She's, she's still employed with us.
Okay, but they've got to do regular, like, keep the lights on and pay bills and stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I don't know if there's any capacity to achieve this goal in the timeframe and still be able to manage the city. Like, we have, there's below our ACO, we have an accounting manager, I think, that's left. Like, there's one, two people left in the entire finance department at this point, especially with the CFO leap. Like, I don't, again, I support this, so I don't know how we're going to solve this problem and still be, like, not overwork our staff.
I get what you're, Councilman, respectfully, I get where you're coming from, but I think we just heard from the city manager, he's looking for an interim that's probably, he isn't sure, but two weeks to a month at, and, and we're talking about, we're in August 6th, we're talking about September, what?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days, so.
But they gotta, like, learn how to log into their computer and someone's got to-
Again, again, these documents are public record. A lot of this analysis has already been done. It's just organizing and putting it together. I'll, I'll, I would publicly do a caveat. If the city manager feels at any point-
Yeah.
That we can't hit the targeted goal September 17th-
Sure.
That he should inform the council and maybe push it off to the meeting after that. If, if the, I would like to leave it in the purview of the city manager. If the city manager comes to us and says, I don't think we can accomplish it by the date, then we just push it to the date where it can be accomplished.
Okay.
Fine with me.
Okay. Just one observation. So we should be figuring out what the net impact of all